be enough.[1031.38-1035.88][S02] I, I think you could break an ankle just because it's very broken up in parts.[1035.88-1039.25][S02] So I think it needs more than just the fence, but I agree with you, Stan, that it's a[1039.75-1043.75][S02] piece of property and asset that we need to, to think about.[1044.75-1049.25][S04] Yeah, I think honestly, the basketball courts at both parks need a lot of help.[1049.25-1050.25][S02] Yeah.[1050.25-1053.45][S04] I actually, I got a letter over the week from someone and, you know, with what[1053.45-1058.25][S04] they would like for these parks, and really like the first dozen things are maintenance[1058.25-1059.25][S04] issues, not even the playground.[1059.25-1062.13][S04] And I know we're, we're focusing on the playground a bit more tonight, but, yeah.[1063.32-1067.88][S11] I, I was going to wait till you were done, but just, I 100% agree with you[1067.88-1069.88][S11] because maintenance is the key factor.[1069.88-1073.88][S11] Like one of my questions that I was going to ask you is how, what is the projected lifeline[1073.88-1075.13][S11] of some of these products?[1075.13-1076.54][S11] What are they made out of?[1076.54-1079.25][S11] Just to get an idea of what they're going to, like here, and I get, get that you're[1080.82-1086.04][S11] demonstrating the assets here is what are they doing in terms of shade?[1086.04-1090.66][S11] Because these equipments, you know, I understand if we're talking about, you know, summertime,[1090.66-1094.95][S11] this would be great for summertime, but if there's no shade there, that's going to deter[1094.95-1095.95][S11] people.[1095.95-1099.58][S11] As somebody who lives on School Street next to Rice Park, you need a fence.[1099.58-1101.04][S11] Bulbs go right into that road.[1101.04-1106.32][S11] A child chases it, cars have narrowly missed, children, dogs, the whole thing.[1106.32-1110.13][S11] So if you're going to do one, I'm going to argue for the other one.[1110.13-1112.54][S11] Because whatever you do to one, these are children's lives.[1112.54-1116.04][S07] I live very close to Rice Park, and I wouldn't take my kids there if there's[1116.04-1118.32][S07] no fence, because it's by a busy road.[1118.32-1121.25][S04] So just so I understand, are you thinking like near the road have a fence[1121.25-1123.25][S04] or just where the playground part is further back?[1123.25-1126.13][S10] The area just needs to be secure.[1126.32-1131.82][S07] Yeah, so you could either do it by the playground or you can include the grassy...[1131.88-1134.13][S04] The grassy area where there should, yeah.[1134.13-1135.13][S07] Where it shouldn't be available to play.[1135.13-1139.63][S10] Basically, if you're going to do anything like that, and you got toddlers and infants[1139.63-1143.58][S10] running around, you need it secured for the parents to be with their kids.[1143.58-1144.58][S04] Yeah.[1144.58-1148.32][S10] We have too many children that may be adopted.[1148.32-1149.32][S10] We can't have that.[1149.95-1153.45][S11] But is that, like, if you made a decision to do it around the playground or that,[1153.45-1157.95][S11] I think people would be okay with either one, but I think that that has to be an option.[1157.95-1158.95][S04] Yeah.[1158.95-1163.45][S11] I think there, like this gentleman was talking about the refurbishment of the basketball[1163.45-1167.25][S11] court, you know, if you're going to do that, they, there has to be some kind of fence.[1167.25-1170.25][S11] So if you're going to fence the whole thing in, it would stop the basketballs from going[1170.63-1171.75][S11] down and all that.[1171.75-1176.04][S11] I do agree with you that the basketball court is in disrepair, but as somebody that[1176.04-1179.32][S11] lives right next door, it has been negative degrees.[1179.32-1181.75][S11] There is somebody at that court every single day.[1181.75-1186.63][S11] So if you're going to remove that, that is some of the upper, you know, teenagers that[1186.75-1190.32][S11] are accessing that court to, you're taking away.[1190.32-1191.32][S10] Right.[1191.32-1192.32][S11] And then you're going to end up with a vandalism that has been seen.[1192.32-1193.32][S10] Right.[1193.32-1194.32][S11] And one of the biggest things that you have said is maintenance.[1194.32-1195.32][S04] Yeah.[1195.32-1201.25][S11] As somebody who has advocated for Rice Park 25 years ago, the maintenance is[1201.95-1203.25][S11] the biggest issue.[1203.25-1204.25][S04] Yeah.[1204.25-1208.13][S11] If you're going to spend 85,000, whatever this one costs, whatever that one costs,[1208.13-1212.82][S11] I want to hear what is proposed to protect these assets, to ensure that they are not[1212.82-1219.04][S11] going to be vandalized, particularly if we're not looking at fixing or ram, doing some[1219.04-1223.04][S11] kind of revive for these basketball courts, maybe replacing or taking out, which I'm[1223.32-1228.95][S11] not opposed to, but either way, you have to have something that is going to be maintained.[1228.95-1232.82][S11] This gentleman is coming here presenting a product that he is probably proud of because[1232.82-1238.13][S11] he's working for this company, but as a town, we have neglected the, what we have put in[1238.25-1239.25][S11] place so far.[1240.25-1243.82][S04] Yeah, I mean, I won't speak for the rest of the board, but I'm not particularly[1243.82-1245.58][S04] in favor of removing the basketball courts.[1245.58-1249.25][S04] I think it would be a matter of repairing them, but that's, that's my opinion on those.[1249.25-1253.25][S02] I mean, repairing that basketball court, when one looks at it and, you know, we[1253.25-1258.58][S02] have people who know the things about asphalt, I'm guessing we may have to remove it before we replace it.[1259.88-1260.88][S10] Yes.[1260.88-1261.88][S02] It's in pretty, it's in pretty tough...[1261.88-1264.54][S04] Yeah, we're not going to, we're not going to be able to skim coat the top and expect[1264.54-1265.82][S04] it to last for more than two years.[1265.82-1266.82][S10] No, it doesn't.[1266.82-1267.82][S02] Yeah, yeah.[1267.82-1268.82][S04] Yeah, it's, it would be fully repaired.[1268.82-1274.63][S02] But again, why don't you talk a little bit about, any kind of warranty that[1274.82-1276.82][S02] we get on this, what, what, how it, you know...[1277.25-1282.82][S05] So all of the posts and, and uprights and everything have a lifetime guarantee.[1283.32-1290.04][S05] I would say the, honestly, the age expectation of the playground would probably be about[1290.25-1293.88][S05] 20 years, just honestly.[1294.32-1296.25][S11] Is that normal wear and tear?[1296.32-1297.32][S05] Yes.[1297.32-1298.32][S10] Yes.[1298.32-1307.63][S05] Um, it does come with a vandalization fix, um, kind of spray that will help take[1307.82-1310.45][S05] off spray paint and stuff.[1310.45-1317.04][S05] But not put up other companies also, but most, most companies will come with that.[1318.13-1320.32][S12] Nick, what is the material, what is it made of, do you know?[1320.45-1321.45][S05] Uh, steel.[1321.54-1322.54][S12] It's all steel?[1322.54-1323.54][S05] Yep.[1323.54-1324.54][S12] Everything is steel?[1324.54-1325.54][S05] Uh, well, the slides are steel.[1325.54-1326.54][S12] Oh, the slides, they're plastic?[1326.54-1328.32][S05] The slides are rotomold plastic.[1328.32-1329.32][S05] PVC.[1329.45-1332.04][S12] Okay, um, sunlight?[1332.54-1333.54][S05] Yep.[1333.54-1335.32][S12] They tanned some stuff up, so I was just wondering how, how they do that.[1335.32-1336.32][S05] Yeah, the sun has definitely been a factor in playgrounds since they started.[1340.82-1350.45][S05] So we've done a lot with trying to combat the UV deterioration, so they, like I said,[1351.45-1354.13][S05] it should last a good 20 years.[1355.45-1362.88][S05] We have some out there 30, 40 years and, like you said, swings that you swung on when[1363.13-1364.13][S05] you were younger.[1364.13-1368.25][S02] I know, I would just say there are people in this room, myself included, who slid[1368.25-1371.04][S02] on the slide that's currently still at High Plains.[1371.75-1373.04][S02] Probably, I'm serious.[1373.04-1376.04][S06] But you know the difference back then, the gauge of metals they were using, the[1376.04-1378.82][S06] gauge of plastics they were using were far thicker.[1378.82-1384.13][S06] Now, because of shipping costs being made out of this country, they've lessened the[1384.13-1388.04][S06] gauge, they break far easier, so you're never going to get a slide or...[1388.04-1390.54][S02] It's going to last for 50 years.[1390.54-1391.54][S02] 50.[1391.54-1394.04][S07] Are their swingers a part of either of these?[1394.04-1396.04][S05] So right now, we just had, we just had the one accessible swing.[1398.45-1402.75][S05] But what we could do is to kind of keep the same budget.[1402.75-1407.04][S05] There are some musical pieces and some kind of, if...[1408.63-1412.32][S02] See, I'm not, I'm not as concerned about the budget as I am about making sure[1412.32-1414.32][S02] we try to address what people feel.[1414.32-1417.25][S05] Well, we, like I was saying, you could take some of that stuff out.[1417.25-1419.04][S05] The swings are not very expensive.[1419.04-1420.04][S04] I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to lose the musical part of it.[1420.04-1421.04][S02] Yeah.[1421.04-1423.82][S04] The mental stimulation part, I think that's good to keep in there.[1423.82-1424.82][S05] Yeah.[1424.82-1425.82][S04] I mean, if we drop the splash pad part, but I also, you know, we don't, we, we've[1427.58-1432.25][S04] never actually defined a specific budget of what we're using from ARPA for this.[1432.25-1436.04][S04] So I think, I think one of our goals is to understand what that would look like so[1436.04-1438.04][S04] we can work on establishing that.[1438.75-1442.04][S08] Like to see infant swings, you know?[1442.04-1443.04][S04] Yeah.[1443.04-1444.04][S08] For like two-year-olds.[1444.04-1445.04][S02] Toddlers.[1445.04-1446.04][S08] Yep, that I'm not seeing.[1446.04-1447.04][S05] Well, there's...[1447.04-1448.04][S08] And right now, there's one at High Plains, and there should be more.[1449.54-1450.54][S02] We agree.[1450.75-1451.75][S04] I, I think...[1451.75-1456.25][S09] If you drop a splash, then you can put that as a swings instead.[1456.25-1457.25][S02] Oh, yeah.[1457.25-1458.25][S05] Oh.[1458.25-1459.25][S09] Just swings.[1459.25-1460.25][S05] Put in 20 swings.[1460.25-1461.25][S07] Can I ask about the projected costs of these two as is?[1463.54-1468.13][S05] So this was about 130,000, and this one was about 52.[1469.54-1471.04][S04] Was that without the splash pad?[1471.25-1472.25][S02] Yeah, that's without.[1472.25-1473.25][S05] Correct.[1473.25-1475.25][S05] Yeah, the splash pad, I think, was 85.[1475.25-1478.82][S02] Now, we're, we're planning to do some of the ripping out the old...[1478.82-1479.82][S05] Yep, that was with, with the town.[1479.82-1480.82][S02] Okay.[1480.82-1483.32][S02] So that, that's considering with the town doing a chunk of, a chunk of the work.[1483.32-1484.32][S05] Yep.[1484.32-1485.32][S02] Okay, okay.[1488.13-1489.13][S02] Sam?[1489.95-1493.82][S03] Is this going to be ultimately determined at town meeting or is this...[1494.13-1498.54][S02] This is ARPA funding, so it will be determined hopefully by kind of a, getting[1499.04-1503.04][S02] enough citizen input and so forth, and ultimately the selectmen will be making the final decision.[1503.04-1506.54][S09] Are people going to vote what they want in Barry?[1506.54-1507.75][S02] No, no.[1507.75-1510.25][S02] We will listen to it, we'll probably have another one of these meetings and have,[1510.82-1514.63][S02] you know, say, okay, we've heard this amount of information.[1514.63-1517.25][S02] And then he will come back and say, okay, here's the swings.[1518.54-1521.13][S02] Here's the swings, here's the fencing.[1521.13-1523.13][S02] I would suspect that this is without fencing.[1523.13-1524.13][S02] Fencing will be...[1524.13-1525.13][S05] Correct.[1525.13-1527.54][S02] Expensive, but I mean, you know, we, it's critical.[1527.54-1531.63][S02] So we're, we're going to say, okay, if we have to do the fencing, we have to do the[1531.63-1532.63][S02] fencing.[1532.63-1535.58][S02] And, and I know that playgrounds are very expensive.[1535.58-1537.04][S02] I know how expensive they are.[1537.04-1541.58][S02] It's sort of a, it's worse than shell shock, it's really expensive.[1541.58-1546.25][S02] So, but it's, it's 20 years, and some people say, well, how can you even talk about $100,000?[1547.13-1552.88][S02] I said, because we're going to pay 75, $77,000 for a new police cruiser out of ARPA pretty[1553.63-1554.63][S02] soon, okay?[1554.63-1555.63][S10] Oh, yeah.[1555.63-1558.04][S02] Okay, and I'm going to say, most of you don't want to see your child in that.[1558.04-1559.04][S10] Thank you.[1559.04-1560.04][S02] We're going to pay $100,000.[1560.04-1561.04][S05] That's a good point.[1561.04-1564.25][S02] And you want to see your children and your grandchildren in this.[1564.25-1566.91][S02] So, I mean, everything costs money.[1566.91-1573.58][S02] We have not done anything as an investment in our children in a playground setting in,[1573.58-1574.75][S02] in my lifetime.[1574.75-1575.75][S02] And that's, that's longer than I want to say.[1575.75-1576.75][S04] I was going to say in my lifetime, but...[1576.75-1579.63][S02] Yeah, well, I can beat you on that, my lifetime.[1579.63-1581.04][S02] Mary Ann's lifetime.[1581.54-1583.25][S02] So, and, okay.[1583.25-1586.32][S09] And Rice Park was donated to the town by the family.[1586.32-1587.32][S02] Four.[1587.32-1589.54][S09] So that money was donated to the town, but was not...[1589.54-1590.54][S02] Yeah, right.[1590.54-1591.54][S09] For a park.[1591.54-1592.54][S02] Yeah.[1592.54-1593.54][S02] And, and so our concern is to make, you know, sharpen your pencil and see other ways in which we can get swing sets, but we know you want a swing sets. We know that.[1601.25-1605.13][S02] We know we need to make sure there's enough for the two to five-year-olds.[1605.13-1608.04][S02] And that means a little different kind of swing set.[1608.04-1613.25][S02] We know that the splash pad, I mean, as much as we thought it would be great, we[1613.32-1617.13][S02] know trying to turn it on, turn it off, having it limited.[1617.13-1622.32][S02] And I would suspect the first season that we have this, I am going to say to everyone[1622.32-1627.32][S02] who lives in the High Plains area, forgive us, because you will have lots of people[1627.32-1631.41][S02] coming and, and participating and playing in the playground, right?[1631.41-1635.13][S02] It'll get less and less, and people will use it, you know, differently and sporadically,[1635.13-1636.88][S02] but that's what happens over in Hubbardston.[1636.88-1641.04][S02] I know some of you who are sitting here go to Hubbardston because they have a very[1641.04-1642.75][S02] nice playground.[1642.75-1648.63][S02] They have the one, the Hubbardston playground that is at the school itself was built by,[1648.63-1651.58][S02] by, by the town, not by the regional school district, was built by the town, was $130,000[1653.63-1656.13][S02] probably 15 years ago.[1656.13-1658.25][S02] It's very small, okay?[1658.25-1663.04][S02] And the one that was built now near their rec field, as they call it, I don't know what the cost was for that, but you can imagine it's right up with what we're talking about. So it's not like we're saying, oh my God, this is the most expensive thing I, we've ever seen. So it's not like we're saying, oh my god, this is the most expensive thing I, we've ever seen, it's not. And it's, it is costly, but this is a one-time opportunity for the community to, to do this important thing for our children. Not only for the children who are here today, but for the children who will be coming along and hopefully decide to stay and raise their families here. So, um, I'm very, I'm very committed to this.
If you can get the housing part figured out.
Yeah, sir?
Good morning, um, in regards to the High Plains Park, in the basketball court.
Yep.
That you mentioned, there's no lighting there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I have had to call the police a number of times because we have vehicles from out of town.
For the, over the, the basketball court?
They're coming up there and they're shutting their lights off in the back, couple of vehicles, five minutes later, they're both splitting different directions, they're running, exchanging drugs up there at the court.
Okay.
Um, so even though you have those signs, you know, it's not to be there after dusk and all that, that doesn't matter, right?
Yeah.
But if we had lights, no one's gonna be able to do that without neighbors on school streets seeing what's going on.
But I, but I know we have to be cautious of one thing, when we did go to meet with parents and so forth at various, to still get various areas where we could have a park, they live there, they don't want us to have big lights on all the time and that when a car comes by, all of a sudden, the whole of school street south is.
But those lights don't have to cover the whole field, you're talking back by the basketball.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Now, have we thought about maybe having a camera at Rice Park?
We, we just, we just talked about that with somebody, I forget who we just talked about.
Because it could be piped into the police station and then.
Yeah, I, I honestly wonder if we might need to consider some security throughout the town, not just in our parks, but in some of our other assets as well, and have a system for the town to use for that. Yeah, Cassie?
Yes.
I went to the first day because we're there daily.
Yeah.
We're there five hours in the summer when it's light out. So, there's a lot going on there. One, you need the basketball court, the teenagers are there in the snow, like that's an outlet for them. But yes, it is dark over there and there are cars there. Two, we need a lot of swings, if we're gonna be having.
A lot of what, I'm sorry?
A lot of swings.
Oh, swings, okay.
Yeah, that's, the biggest fight up there is the swings.
And that's amongst the parents.
You've got a set of four right now, the other ones are just too far, so they don't want to be away from their friends. But you need at least five swings, at least.
I said fifteen.
I had ten to, I have ten to twelve written down, right?
When you say, when you say five swings, do you mean?
I meant at least five.
You know, when, when you mean five, five, five sets of four? Is that what she meant?
No, 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 like, so, let's.
Five units, different sets, five units.
Yeah, and so there's three slides, three on each, so you need fifteen swings.
Two on each.
Two, two on each?
Two, two in each bay.
Okay, so.
So is there a way to do like the bigger ones that?
Yeah.
Cause I think that.
Yeah, they're, they're stackable.
Because you've got a group of friends and they all want to sit next to each other and what have you. So if we could do one big one or two big ones that are next to each other, that kind of thing.
Like five or six bays, so ten to twelve swings altogether in one row.
Yeah, okay.
The other thing is we're there in the summer and yes, it gets very hot. So if there's any trees or anything taking down, there's one tree right now that we moved the picnic table under.
I know you do.
Yeah.
We need some kind of covering, I don't know what that is, like the one Hubbardston that has retractable maybe for the winter.
We have, we've done, sorry, that's to interrupt, but we, we've done playgrounds where on these uprights, we can put shade over the top.
For the kids.
I mean, I think we also want to be careful not to take out any trees in the process.
Yeah, agreed.
I know.
Is this, is this the only company?
Well, this is, this is a company that is on the state bid list.
Right, but is, is this?
I'm sure there are hundreds of companies.
There are other companies, I think it behooves us to, to get proposals from many, uh, before we spend hundred, two hundred. Where we, I don't know how much money we spend, have to spend. We have ARPA money where we're committed to spend up to a certain point, I don't know how much that is, you probably know in the back end, maybe it might be a good idea to tell us how much money we have to spend, number one. Number two, we gotta bring three or four people from the bid list and have a proposal from all of these.
I don't, I don't think there are a lot of people on the bid list, um, did you find?
There's a few others.
There's a few others, I mean, we certainly can do that, what, what we will, certainly we're, we're eager to make decisions within the next month, just because if you want to get it in by the summer, we, we need, need to do that. But we certainly can call other, other vendors and.
Think if they're willing to work with us with the swings and the other things they want, because these kids want it this summer. They were waiting last summer and it's possible.
But as Stan says, we, we do, Sam says, we do want to make the best deal for the town.
Yeah.
There's a pretty strict timeline on ordering the components as well, isn't it? With, we've got a decent discount.
Yes, the, um, the, these units are sale units. Uh, I think it's March thirty-first.
Okay, that was ordering, getting the order in?
Yes.
Can wiggle with that a little bit, so.
I mean, that's something y'all have to consider as well.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Sam, you know, you're, you said, Mark, we need is that this is like business. And you know in business, when companies say, well, we can do, do this for you until March thirty-first or all of a sudden, that gives an, that gives an interest in the purchaser that they have to make a decision quickly. We will, we will, if we're gonna spend that kind of money, we will be able to call our own shots as a town. And to get the best opportunity. Having one person here, wonderful, he has pictures. There's another, other pictures that we need to make a decision on.
Well, there were, there were other people, okay, other vendors that we can talk with, and there's no question, this is an effort on our part to get what do we want in the playground? So that when, so that when we talk with another vendor, we say, this is what we want. He's gonna have to go back and he's gonna say, okay, now they want swings, they want this, they want fencing, so we're gonna get more information from him.
At the beginning of this discussion, we weren't talking about another vendor, we were talking about this gentleman's coming and proposing. So, you need to use, this, this, Mark, we need is, is a business.
Yeah, it is.
We have to do our job, so we're expecting to select people and town administrators to do our jobs.
I actually, um, reached out to like three different people, so Tammy has the things that I, different vendors, so, you know, I'm, I'm sure we're gonna exercise that.
Thanks.
Yeah, I definitely invite you guys to, you want what's best for the town. If it's us, awesome, if it's not, I'm friends with ninety-eight percent of the vendors in the area, so.
So, so this product here, how long has this company been in business and?
Nineteen twenty-eight, I believe.
Been kicking around for a while. I would, I would say that a lot, a lot of the things that we have looked at, um, and the, and the vendors, the, the stuff that they sell is pretty much the same look, okay? Now, have I gone out and actually touched it? No. Um, but when you, when you, when you start going around and looking at playgrounds like we've been doing, you will see that there's much more similarities than there are differences, and it's all about choice. And you saw what Hubbardston decided to do, they got, you know, the awning thing and they've got this and they've got that, and, and they have a certain amount of space that they wanted to put it in, they did certain things on their ground cover that maybe we're gonna do differently, trying to make it handicapped accessible with, you know, the, the walkways to, to all of the, okay, that's handicapped accessible, that's a little more expensive. So there's no question, we're, we're not trying to spend more money, we're trying to get the best product we can that meets the needs of the parents and the students.
We gotta get it right the first time.
The kids.
That's actually my question, what is the ground covering, especially on the one that's built to be more handicapped accessible? Cause I see that it's different ground covering just up to the slide, but what about over there with the musical part and things like that?
So this, the blue area is what they call port in place, and that's the rubber surfacing, and the rest would be the engineered wood fiber, the wood chips basically.
How hot does that, does that mat get?
Um, we can change the color of it to match the playground or whatnot, but, um.
But it's absorbing the heat from the sun.
Can you make it?
Unless you go black.
Can you make it so accessible, like the musical, bringing the lighting part and also?
It would change, it's, it's about twenty dollars a square foot. It's very expensive because you have to do an eight-inch process base, and then two inches, two and a half inches of rubber surfacing and then a top coat. So it does increase the price, but we could definitely.
Just, yeah, I'm just wondering if there's a way to like move the way the musical is so more closer to the other parts, so it is accessible.
Closer to another entrance or something.
Yeah, closer to an entrance or something where it's not.
Yeah, we can maneuver things around and.
Over wood chips.
Got it.
Yeah. Yep.
Cassie?
Something that's pennies in comparison is if there could be a lot of seating, like benches, what have you.
For parents.
Yep.
For anybody.
Well, kids too, they eat lunch.
Yeah, and that, that's, that causes next to nothing. Yeah, and.
Yep.
The only other question I have is the, if you're changing the shape of it, is the soccer field still staying intact?
So, I, at least the way I was looking at it, there was a way to keep two soccer fields and change the shape of it. The soccer fields would just have to be offset from each other a little bit, we could still have two fields and the basketball court and just reshape it.
We will just make certain that that's the case, I mean, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I have a sketch that I did for whatever that's worth.
She had a question.
What about the parking there?
The, the parking, well, there, there is a, a parking lane there that drug, you know, where people drive back to the basketball courts. And so if we did, you know, parking, there's quite a bit of parking there, I would say if they, if you nose in, not linearly, but if you nose in all down, and you can park there and they, and if, if anything, there's wonderful drainage up there, gravel to the nth, nth degree. So, yes, there's a lot of parking there, there's no street parking, please be aware, there's no street parking, there shouldn't be any street parking, and when you go up there, you'll say, oh my gosh, there's no street parking. But there's, there is a lot of parking alongside, and we did spend some time looking at where could people park if. And remember, we have soccer games and so forth up there, and there's quite a few people that show up for those. There's parking way on the other side of Thornfield as well, but I don't think that would be, you know, work with the playground, but it would work for other kind of events that, that are there.
Yeah, we, I, we might need to, so I think there's, there's kind of a larger picture that we need to look at as far as main, you know, updating the parks outside of the playgrounds and, you know, um, you know, I mean, we, we need to take pride in these parks if we expect any of the teenagers to also take pride in these parks. You know, I mean, it's, it's just a part of reducing those issues is, is maintaining it, our, and typing that, that level of, you know, upkeep, and, you know, with that parking area, there is some issues, I think rutting, we would need to, to update.
Yeah.
You know, improve that area.
The biggest thing with the playgrounds is community involvement, and this many people here obviously shows you, you all care about.
We care about our kids, we care about our kids. Our kids is number one. If we don't have a facility at home, then it should be somewhere we can take them and have safety and not have to worry about anything, parking, or someone being vandalized to the child. We don't have to worry about that because we have the facilities where the kids can go and expose their minds and be happy and free.
I think we also need to talk about, once we do this, then we, it's planned to continue to do this.
Yes.
Because I don't want to be back in a meeting in three years being like, all this stuff is now not as great as it was when we spent tons of money. Um, also too, looking at something like having maybe a porta potty or something like that up there too, you know what I mean? Um, just because, you know.
People have to go to the bathroom. You're gonna send up thirty, low yourself.
That's, that's the easiest request you've had, porta potty. Lucy?
Just to add to the comments about having a covered space, picnic tables, shade, I know the, the historical commission has suggested, at least for Rice Park and also for High Plains, I believe, um, a type of meeting area with that type of, you know.
A gazebo, a gazebo, a similar gazebo.
And possibly with his, a, a space for like a bulletin board with.
Yeah, a gazebo with.
A store signage with maps about where you can go in that area, so it'd be a partly a community focus also there, not just for children, but for the whole neighborhood, where they, where they might, you know.
To, to reference what you're saying, Green Hill Park, they have that bulletin board up there, they have that big gazebo, people they greet up there all the time, Green Hill Park in Worcester.
Oh.
So if it was similar to something like that, then you have a great accessibility for your kids to go.
Trails map and, and that type of thing.
Yeah.
Okay, Lucy, there's, there's this splash pad we just put back in, but now it's called the pavilion.
Wait, music around. That will be useful.
But that is something that could be, you know, a little bit outside of the playground, could be part of a larger endeavor after the playgrounds are, are taken care of, yeah. And I mean, that's where we also want to start digging into the open space funding that we could have available now that we've completed our open space plan, outside of the ARPA funds that we're looking at right now.
I just have a couple of questions because, you know, people have been going and I just want to make sure I understand something. You said that this is due to the ARPA fund so that there will be no voting, so there'll be no town besides like a forum like this, we will have no say in what the actual outcome comes out to be.
No person will have an individual say, for example, else, when we get all of this information, we'll put, yeah, we'll put back, we'll say, okay, here's, 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 here's what it's gonna look like now, here's the schematic, here's this, here's that. And so you might show up and say, I want one more bench, and everybody says, well, we already have four, I'm just making this up, we already have four benches, no, and so we'll, somebody's gonna have to, and ultimately it'll be the three of these board members or whoever the board at this time, that says, okay, this is the plan, this is what we are gonna purchase, and this is the cost. And you're welcome to come, because it'll be very hard to please all of the people all the time on this.
I just, I wanted to, so my understanding, I, and that's what I thought, I wanted to make sure I misunderstood every, you know what I'm saying? So we're giving our feedback, there's gonna be more discussion on it, okay.
Right, it's not like we're going through the entire process just for it to get shot down at time.
I, I, but it was quick when it said, so I wanted to go back and revisit that.
Yeah.
One other thing is, is you were talking about accessibility and handicap, and you pointed out that the park that is in Rice Park is set back. If that is, you know, something we're, we're trying to, you know, be inclusive and have handicap accessibility, what are we talking about to put in, because right now, that park is not handicap accessible, there is no way to get through to that park. And the other thing is, is that going to your point is, is as far as I'm aware, there are certain regulations on Rice Park in terms of any kind of building structure.
Yes, yes, ma'am, correct.
So if we're looking at a pavilion or gazebo or any type of thing, we have to be careful to follow that, that, those guidelines.
Right, I would say the historical, the historical society has that info, that kind of information, we obviously would be in contact with them as we are even about what kind of sign we can put up anywhere near the common.
Cause it is all about building code.
I'm sorry?
It's all about the building code.
Building code.
Oh, yeah, all the building.
Building code and, and how the, the park was deeded and things like that, yeah.
So I just want to hear about that handicap for Rice Park, and then the other thing is, is that just one more thing, I apologize, you said wood chips, is there any other alternative even just so that we can have a price? Because somebody was talking about recycled tires or other things, just because as myself, chasing after my kids, I've tripped on wood chips and they are no fun. So is there any other options just so that I'm aware of, you know, in terms of like throwing it out there?
There is what they call crumb rubber, which is shredded tires, but that is absolutely not wheelchair accessible.
Okay.
I always had a trade show one time and they had it set up and they were twenty feet down the aisle within a half an hour. But they do make mats that are basically, it's like if you, if you think about a, a commercial kitchen, they have those like.
Black mats?
Hexagonal.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Black mats that they stand on.
I have them in my garage.
Yeah, they make those that can be installed, they're a pain in the butt, but.
I, I would wonder on the maintenance of those, and we've already established maintenance hasn't been our strong suit.
Yeah, it's to replenish the wood chips, you have to pull them all up, replace the wood chips and then put it over.
Yeah, so I, I do wonder, I know it could be a higher upfront cost to do the port in place in more of these areas, but long-term, if that could be a benefit, I mean, how does that hold up over time, I guess is, is the question, the port in place?
A lot of those, hell, with vandalism, if they, uh.
Old rubber mats?
It's, it's a pain to, uh, pay up. And now with one of the issues we had in Worcester.
With the port in place?
Yeah.
Okay. Cause I mean, I, I know that like.
It's good for handicap wheelchairs, but if it gets vandalized, now you've got a big issue, now you've got a trip and hassle. What then, you would with the chips.
Ours.
I'm saying that's a good product.
It, it does come with a five-year warranty, but again, after that, if you have vandalism or it's.
How, how does that get, how do you repair that?
Uh, you cut out the top coat.
Okay, so it's a whole new floor.
It's kind of, it's kind of like concrete.
Okay.
They, they mix it up and then they travel it out and.
Mm-hmm, yeah, just throw in spray glue underneath and.
A little more.
A little more than that, yeah.
Way in the back?
Just some, um, feedback on structures, so swings obviously important, but I think it's hard to get a judgment here, but the size for the two to five, I would say that should be much smaller. Um, you know, I think about my kids, I have four, six and under, so I'd say three and a half and above, they're on the big stuff, so I'd rather, you know, small, like it's important to have that area, but it, I would rather more space for other activities.
Youngers, youngins, youngins have that area.
Yeah, but they need to have an area, but it doesn't need to be that large.
Okay, okay.
I think you have a greater age gap where they're gonna be wanting on this to be climbing and on the bigger things. The other thing that what we look for is, um, a lot of the cool playgrounds have a lot of those climbing things now with like the ropes and they're taller, so I don't know if there's anything like that, but that's a big, and there's one at the school.
Yeah, cause the youngins try to do what the big ones do.
Yeah.
Invitation.
But yeah, some sort of climbing structure, and I mean, I, I, I know what you mean, like my, my two-year-old just follows onto the five-year-old structures, he doesn't care about the, the small ones.
It's good to have the smaller one, but as, once they start to get a little more active, you have a much greater age range who want the bigger activities, and even the, um, like the gray thing there that they're, that they're interactive and playing with, you know, my kids will go to that for like a minute, and then they go, they want to be on active things. So some cool things we've seen before are like, there are wavy things that kids can run on or even like a seesaw or, they want to run at the playground, so while it's cool to, like even at Hubbardston, they had a little thing where they were pushing it along and they looked at it and ran to the next thing, but they want to run, so the more interactive, you know, activities, I think.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, on my kind of hopeful list, you know, like a climbing structure, like you said, some sort of balancing feature that kids can walk across, whether it's going from, you know, stump to stump kind of thing, or a waving kind of balance beam, um, you know, some sort of spinning thing, I mean, old kid, they'll sit on that and just enjoy that for hours.
Yep.
Um, you know, and, and some sort of seesaw, I know it's not like the traditional seesaws anymore, but one, you know, where it's like, you know, different people at different angles, I, I know I saw in the catalog, there are a few things where people could go on different sides of it, you know, like a three or four-person one, um, something like that. And I mean, I'll throw it out there, there was a zip line in the catalog that someone gave me from you guys? That was thrilling to look at, I don't know how, I don't know what that would end up being, but that was, that was a fun one, if we can see with something like that.
They're on a lot of playgrounds, right?
Yeah, yeah.
They're usually taken out for the kids, so I didn't.
Cassie?
All I was gonna say is, more is better, especially if we're gonna see an uptick in people coming.
Yeah.
We probably have thirty to forty kids that would use the playground that live there.
Right.
Yeah.
So in High Plains, so more is definitely better than some kind of intricate, just something.
Okay.
How much, how much money ARPA funds do we have available?
That's later on the agenda, Sam, you're gonna want to stick around.
What?
We have that on the agenda, Sam.
Oh, it is, oh.
Yep, there's printouts and everything.
Oh, good, great, thanks. So in that case, some of these folks shouldn't leave, because a lot of the time when they, the issue that they've come for
Well, no, we, we, we will not be saying, this is how much we're gonna spend on playgrounds tonight, for sure. I mean, because when we listen to the input, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna say the handbags and modifications.
Yeah.
Obviously, we're gonna call a couple of other vendors and say, here's what we want, we want this, we want that, we want whatever, and, um.
Right, we're not gonna sit here today and cap ourselves with something that's not sufficient for what we're looking for.
Right, right.
Another thing on the accessibility, have you guys seen the like playground A C boards, where they're like big playground and they have, for non-verbal, non-speaking kids? Where they have different things to point to, whereas like, plus, I can show pictures or send emails later.
Do they have all those at Coes Park in Worcester?
I don't know where they have one around.
I think I saw something along the lines there, yeah, but like the visual cues of what goes where and the pathway, yeah, yeah.
Much ways, things like that. I just, I don't know how much it costs to add something like that, but that's another way to add accessibility.
I haven't seen that, I'll have to check it out.
Kids or non-speaking kids, just to like, in word of communication.
Okay, and, and there we go, we haven't seen, we haven't seen, so it's something new, it's a world horizon opposite, that we should add. That's something that hasn't been seen, so it should be brought to our horizons, that is, we should bring it.
Okay, um, I think we have some good feedback, I think you have some good feedback.
Yeah.
Um, and obviously, we've got some, some work to do to finalize a, a design that includes
Why don't you all, tonight, all put in new revision and add swings and
Yeah, uh, one, one thing I don't know that we, I, I just want to make sure that we have enough input on is, um, equipment as far as Rice Park goes, if there's any input on what equipment should be there.
But we, we have a small diagram about for Rice Park, there's only one small, yeah, that's relatively small piece of, of equipment there, um.
Right now, over to Rice Park, there's a lot of the mock playgroups over there.
Right, right, mock's using that now.
Like pre-kindergarten, uh, type A.
Two to five.
I think the same thing.
Two to five.
I think the same thing.
Right there, really change their efficiency over there.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
I think the same thing will do.
So I have a question, are we keeping the existing that's there, or are we getting rid of it?
No, I think we should put, I think we should put that there, I think we should put that there and put on your, your other one, same thing, same structure.
Claire, could, I, are your question?
So there, there is a small piece, there's a slide, there is, you know, a dinosaur, are you keeping that, refurbishing it, or are you replacing it, is my question?
Probably replacing it.
So then if you're replacing it, you're putting a minimal thing, and the problem is, is that when you have town events, you know, two hundred and fifty, um, year commission, people flood down the street, they park down that street. And then people want to do something to get, you know, away from the crowd, or do something with their children. If you're putting something miniscule like that, the same discrepancy that they're talking about is, is that if you're talking about people flooding in, that's not gonna do it. I mean, if you have some swings to go with it, some slides, okay, maybe, but you're talking about, you know, and again, if you're looking to have this be used, have it be accessible, you know, what I have seen is, I have a fourteen-year-old and I have a six-year-old. The fourteen-year-old wants to play basketball, what does he have to do? Take the little sister up, if there's nothing for her to do, he had, he spends most of his time doing all, you know, not being able to play basketball, you know, doing whatever, you know, it is, chasing around.
Cause she can't be sustained.
Right, so is, is this gonna sustain my six-year-old? Absolutely not. And that's just my concern, something like that potentially, and you have a piece of land that is Rice Park, but you have a piece of land, and I don't know the deed on that, right next to it, so
What's, what's right next to it?
The parking lot.
No, there is grass there too.
Yeah, there is, yeah, there is a lot of
There's a line up where Rice Park is, and then there's grass.
Well, the only, the only concern that we have, uh, when, when the fire department and the town authorized the study about if we were to do, do a new fire station, safety station, one of the locations, okay, is basically right at the municipal lot. And that's one, and that's probably the most cost-effective, but, and then one of them is, um, ripping down the old Beard Motors building, raising that and doing something there. And I forget where the other location is, but, so we're concerned about
The other one's in the same place, I believe, which isn't effective.
So if we, if we, we're, we're concerned about taking that very minimal municipal, municipal parking lot, and, you know, making it more playground-centric, and then, you know, ten years from now, um, you know, we ride in and say, we're ripping this down, because we're putting the fire station here, when we know, okay, already, that if the fires
That was gonna happen.
It, it could, the fire station's probably gonna go there, cause as, we, I don't think we can afford to raise the old Beard Motor Building and do all of the stuff that needs to be done there, I mean, I don't know. So I think that there's some resistance to, um, us just saying, yeah, let's just take all of that Rice Park area, um, because imagine if we, if that becomes the fire thing, people are gonna say, what were you thinking?
But again, as, on the alternate side is, is that for fifty-two thousand dollars, is that, is that worth it? I, I don't know, do you know what I'm saying?
Well, yeah, well, I mean, that's, that's a comment that we, we think about.
And again, that's, you know, so it's like, and looking at the age, ages in that neighborhood, looking at, you know, you know, information in that neighborhood, you know, these are things that, I mean, you have an example right here, you have an active three-year-old, is that gonna, one piece gonna sustain them? I, I highly doubt it, and so again, you know, we've been talking about adding swings, adding a slide, so if that's something we're gonna do there, fully support you. And do I think that that, this, this first one will fit? No, but at the same time, is, you know, do I think that that is by itself is?
No.
And again, that's my personal opinion, and there's several other people whose children, you know, seem to, you know, do both parks, the basketball courts and stuff like that, but I'm just looking at the differential, you know, everybody's gonna flood down to High Plains, because people are potentially, you know, gonna look at that and go, they spent that on that?
Well, they're gonna say that no matter what we do.
Right, but just saying.
But I also understand the cost of this, I mean, I, 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 and from, you know, to defend this gentleman, the costs are right on par, you know, and even not cheaper, you know what I'm saying? So I, I applaud it, but, you know, looking at something for that area.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I, I know, you know, Ms. Rihanna from, from Mock wasn't able to make it tonight with other things going on, and we, we definitely need to get some input from her and send that directly to you, as far as what Mock would be, be, you know, would be helpful for, for Mock there. You know, for anyone who doesn't, oh, sorry, I was just gonna tell anyone, but, for, for anyone who doesn't know, Mock is a, an organization that's funded by the state, um, Making Opportunity Count, and they have, one of their locations is in Berry, right in the center. Um, so they have one in Berry, one in Gardner, one in Lemonster, and so it's a place where people go and do playgroups and developmental activities for, for, you know, preschool-aged kids.
And we've actually done playgroups at both locations, both High Plains and, and there. And have you looked at maybe saving some of the equipment? I understand if it's worn down or whatever, tear it out, but maybe sticking this in between
Well, we have to be very conscious of, once we put in an ADA compliant, okay, situation, we, we have to make certain that everything that we leave there meets those, okay, we have to. And so I would, I can't say to you, we can't save anything, there's probably swings that we can save, but whether or not, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean
I know, I, I know we can't save the slide.
Right, and
I think one of the, the driving things behind this project too, is that a lot of the, the playground equipment that we have is at the point where it's becoming more of a liability than an asset.
Well, it's obsolete.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's out of date, and I mean, when, when you get to the point where, you know, you're stuffing paper towels into rust holes to keep hornets from coming out, you have a problem.
And I think it's a good idea with these, like benches, this type, is, uh, no maintenance, cause they have like a coating on them, and you don't have to repaint, and that's the way to go.
Yeah, I, I think
And if you go with like a picnic table, they have them out of the same materials.
Same thing, yep.
I'm hearing there's probably a few handicap people, so you may want to have a handicap or two block, uh, picnic tables.
As Claire would point out, we have this handicapped picnic table at Rice Park currently, with no possible way a handicapped person can get from the road to the, to the handicap table. I mean, so, um, there's, there's no question that, um, the, the community has not had a focus on this for, you know, for as, as long as I've been living here, that's a long time. And, um, when we knew that, when I ran for select board and, and we got together and we started to say, we've got this ARPA money, we've got to spend a chunk of it on our children, we just have to. Because we buy a police cruiser, we buy an ambulance, and all of that's great, don't get me wrong, it's wonderful to have the, um, the capacity to do that. But I, I think, you know, all three of us have been talking and working, and Mark, you've gone out, looked at other playgrounds as well, and God knows that, um, John has done more than his homework.
Well, it's, it's always fun to take the kids to other playgrounds and see what they have.
And, um, and, and
John, how old's your kids?
Uh, two and four.
Two and four, you have kids?
Twenty-nine and thirty.
No, it's all, no, it's all, but, um, yeah, when we, us families of Mock get together, and we have to really like watch over our kids, it's, it's concerning, it's very concerning. And we're there, this is the first time that we actually went out last week into the park to have fun, because it's not so for the kids.
Well, at any rate, um, I appreciate all of your time and attention this evening, and, uh, we will be talking with Nick and saying, okay, Nick, you've heard it all here.
Yep.
You know, you'll be contacting us with new ideas and opportunities, now, now that we know that we have some new, you know, demands, or at least suggestions, that we'll need to follow up on, obviously, we'll call some other vendors and say, this is what we want, we want some of this, but some of that, we want more swings, we want this, and then we'll kind of look at the money and decide what we're gonna do. Sam?
Is there, excuse me, but, is there a timeline with this money, this decision needs to be made?
Yes.
Yep.
We have to, we have to
Everybody should be aware of that.
Yes, we, we have to be under contract minimally, okay, before December thirty-first, twenty-four. We have to expend everything before twenty-six, so we, we obviously want to get this, um, get this not only on, yeah, get it, get this done. It, what, what, what I'm concerned about is, every, every week or every month we wait, there's kids not having the access to some program.
Ma'am, thank you so much, that was what I was trying to get to the bottom of, we're here waiting, 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 and then we still gotta fly into these places that already are not designed for the kids.
Yes, sir.
Is this the forum where we can talk a little bit about the speed real quick around the park?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay, so up on High Plains, uh, if you look at the Google websites, okay, Peach Street lists at forty miles per hour on Google. So FedEx drivers and, you know
Think it's forty?
Yeah, they're flying, I have sent, I have sent video to the police station, I stand in the middle of the road, you ask my neighbors, and I make these guys stop, and I tell them, I have all day, you have a schedule, I've got all day.
Yes.
Okay, they fly forty, fifty, fifty-five down Peach Street, okay?
I don't know how you can drive that fast on those streets, but
What happens, what happens is, we have, like Kathy said, we have thirty to forty children, always running across the street, and nothing is stopping these people, other than a few of us getting out in the middle of the road.
Exactly.
Is there any way, I know that we can't put, um, permanent speed bumps because of the plows and stuff.
Right.
Can we get those rollable, heavy rubber speed bumps that we can roll out for the summer season, and pull up in the winter to slow these guys out? My friend Eric, her husband, already got hit by a car up there.
Yes.
Okay, I am not gonna wait for my little neighbors to get killed.
Thank you, brother.
We need a, a number of speed bumps on that stretch, and I, we've been talking about it for a couple of years now, um, and it's just getting worse and worse.
Yeah, so I, I brought forward a, um, for, for consideration, a speed hump policy at a DPW commission meeting, and I realize now, I think that's something that would actually be handled by the select board, not DPW commission, so I think it's time to bring that up here, and ideally, you know, and what that would do is create a system, so, you know, if a certain number of people on a road want them, then we would have, you know, a public hearing for that to approve them. Um, or if, you know, there was an incident where a pedestrian was hit, then automatically it should be considered for that.
I'd be happy to go down to petition, I'll get a petition.
Even then, I, I don't think we would, right, exactly, I mean, there's certain limitations that, you know, the MUTCD puts on where we can put them, they can't be on arterial roadways, which obviously Peach Street's not an arterial roadway, there's, there's other things like that, but I, I, you know, in my experience, Peach Street's a good candidate for it. So I, I think, you know, and School Street North as well, you know.
In the interim, is there a possibility to have them, these areas that have parks patrolled more? Because I mean, we've talked about this parking lot, we've talked about, you know, different areas where these cops could sit, you know, I would guarantee that if you talk to the fire department, they would talk about how they have a hard time getting out to respond to caller, calls, because people are whipping up and down School Street. So I mean, I, I don't, I'm not, I'm not gonna lie to you, I have no recollection, I don't go down to Peach Street, I, it's not my neighborhood, but if they're having that same problem while we're waiting for that, can it be proposed? And obviously, that's not going to do that to the officers of this town, who we pay, you know, as taxpayers, their salaries, to, you know, petition to have them even once a month sit in these places, because they'll meet their ticket quota.
Yeah, I, I think, I think Tammy, you, as town administrator, could talk to the police chief about having more patrols there. You know, I, there's, there's some concern, there was someone brought up at one point that the fire department might be in charge of speed humps, I'm still trying to investigate that, there was, there was some clause involved in something, it seems to be out of there now, but it's, it is a process.
I was thinking, if we can't get speed bumps, a couple neighbors approached me, I think I'm gonna get some spike strips that will go out across the road, as soon as a car passes, the flats will retract under my porch.
I'm required to have no comment on that.
Hypothetically, hypothetically, you know. Hypothetically.
Okay.
Hypothetically, I have no comment.
But just because, if we're talking about putting these parks in there, we want to ensure the safety of the children in the interim.
Always be around.
Because, you know, you're talking about them going forty, they whip down School Street, they go, cause it's a hill, you get going, and it's automatic, that's a thirty, and they're going way faster than thirty.
Well, we're, we're a little off top, topic, I, I don't mean to shut you up on that, but we do have another
Safety of the parks, yeah.
Playground question.
Um, I was gonna ask, like, what would it look like to maybe lower the speed limits around
Oh, you are, she's, sorry, she's asking me the same thing.
Go for it, yeah, I'm giving it.
If they're going fast already, do the speed bumps cause damage to cars, if they're going too fast, do they know about?
The, the, so one of the things that we would, one, one thing that we would absolutely require with speed humps, there's appropriate signs that you would put up, that are very clear, say, speed hump, you know, and you can take them down in the winter, recover them, but we would, we would absolutely have to put up the, you know, um, MUTCD requires signs to go with those. Um, and there's also pavement markings that you can put that are essentially, you know, arrows that point to it indicating ahead of it that you're approaching it.
Yes.
There's a lot of ways to communicate with drivers, um.
There's no question of talking with the chief is important.
Some of the residents that have the lower cars may not be able to get home and drive over the speed bumps.
Well, the, these are speed humps, they're a little different, these are, these are designed to, to have, uh, lower approach angles, it's, it's, they are designed for this purpose.
If any of you drive Route Nine by Amherst College, anybody drive Route Nine by Amherst College, okay, that's what he means, you know, you can, quite frankly, you're gonna be airborne if you think you're gonna go over there fifty.
Right.
Right, I mean, they're long, I mean, it, it's, it's not, they're not ugly, they're, they can plow over them, but
I need to go to Amherst sometime.
Have, you know, if you go to Amherst, I, cause every time I go there, I'm going, duh, cause you really have to slow.
I mean, you're gonna
For all seven of these, I have two kids over my house. I will, uh, look forward to, uh, coming back up here, and, uh, if you have any questions, talk to her.
Hey Nick, could you just add those things, get some prices for us?
Yes, yep.
Okay, so yeah, speed bumps, I would say, go to Amherst, drive on Route Nine, right by Amherst College, before you get right into the center, and you'll say, oh, this, this could work.
I'm not familiar with this, so I don't know if that's what I'm thinking of, but
But I, but I'm just saying, I, I
The rubber ones, like, we, we did a
Nope.
No. Okay, I don't know that
Six or eight feet?
Right.
Yeah, are you familiar with the, the rubber ones in Worcester that were done as the temporary speed hump test program there? I was thinking something more along those lines, they're temporary, so you can take them out in the winter.
But you get the cars that are lower, and they're spraying.
But more, more means
They shouldn't, but, yeah.
The ones in Amherst, that's a nice settlement, that's nice.
Those are, are those permanent ones?
They're permanent, they're permanent.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, but we have chapter ninety-five.
By Sam Hurst.
That, that's roads though, so that, you know.
Okay, well, I, I thank all of you for coming tonight and providing us with such, with such interesting and thoughtful input. I have to say, some of you brought up things that I hadn't thought of, and, uh, the, the swings and those kinds of things, we knew from the get-go that while it was not something that they included, um, easy to do, fencing is, is something that they were just recommending maybe along the front edge. Fencing is, is something that they were just recommending maybe along the front edge. I agree with you personally that we should try to fence the whole thing. Understanding that is an extremely expensive proposition for the fencing. But, but there are kids and we want them safe, and so we make decisions about fencing, I guess, that makes sense for kids.
And we can be creative with those, changing the shape of it. You can keep the same square footage and literally cut the perimeter in half.
Right, right.
And be a little bit closer to where your kids are.
Yeah.
So why does School Street has partial fencing already?
Yes, it does. Yes, it does.
So just add to it and-
Well, you and I both know, here's what's gonna happen. When you have this old crappy fence, you know, and then we said, "Yeah, that'll be good enough, and then we'll add this nice stuff in the back", you guys are all gonna say, "What are you doing? You're spending all this money. They won't spend another six grand to fix the fence." So, we, we, yeah, we, we wanna put together a, a product that meets your needs, okay? And that is relatively affordable for us. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for us to have this level of ARPA money available to us for this, for, for a purpose like this. And I, we're very excited about the prospects. And John has, you know, I, I'd like him, I have thirty-something and a, whatever, and he's got the kids who'll actually use it. We have some grandkids that we'd like to have opportunities to use it. So, this is a wonderful opportunity for the community. We will be back in session. We'll, we'll call you back probably within the next two weeks to say, "Okay, here's what we think you said." And no, you're not gonna have everything you want. Okay, you're not gonna have thirty swings if that was in your mind, but you're gonna have maybe twelve or fifteen, some reasonable amount. And obviously, we're gonna go to other funding sources if we can, in addition to the ARPA money. We're hopeful to do this, this summer. Obviously, we have to spend our ARPA money within a reasonable time, so this summer is the time to do it. I know that, if you want to talk a little bit about the preparation that we can do from the town side?
Well, there's quite a bit of money we could save if we, if we actually do some of the excavation or, in the preparation for the mats. And the way it's gonna, the, the certain, underneath each one of those structures is a screen mat, if you will, that holds it, you know, so it won't fall over and whatnot. And that has to, that whole area has to be dug out around each one. And then after that, you have just replacing, you know, every, all the dirt you excavate with the chips, you know. So we could save quite a bit on that. And like I spoke before, the self-build, but I don't know if, I don't know. We could, we could save quite a bit on self-build. What's that?
Self-build? What do you mean?
It means that we'll say, "Okay, here's all the equipment. Here's everything we need."
Get a bunch of people.
Show up on, show up on Saturday. Bring your shovel.
That's what we're really about. We wanna be involved. We've never been involved. That's the problem. We've never been involved.
Well, you're involved now.
So we need to get involved.
Careful what you wish for.
No, that will make a difference because if the parents are putting in for their kids to have, then it's more incentive for all of us to be a part.
And also, like, with those, the fences too, and save money, have the kids help out too with that?
Yeah, the children will be used to be a part of it.
Putting the fences up?
Oh, no, no, I, I don't, I don't think we could do that, no, but there's some things-
That's a liability. I don't think we're gonna take on.
For a liability, you can't have, you can't have kids under a certain age helping those community build things because we don't have the insurance for that.
Okay, okay.
With the self-build, they will send two or three representatives. Uh, I'm not saying this company, what, the company I looked at, one of them. And they send two or three different people, so they're the brains of the operation and, you know.
Well, it would be their labor, so.
Yeah, well, you shovel piece on, you shovel bark, you know, that kind of stuff.
There'd be guidance, yeah.
Yeah.
What about, when I went, I went to Tenth Aspen.
Okay.
Okay, and we had co-op. What about asking one of these trade schools to do, do they have their eleventh and twelfth graders, you know, with supervisors?
Well, they, they just don't have the equipment and, and so forth. And beside the fact that trying to get Mon, to be Monty Tech probably, because that's our, that's our sister school. The, the situation would be, they only work during the school year. And, and they only work during the school week, like, you know, Monday, whatever. So it's really hard to say, "Oh, we're doing this as a community building on Saturday and Sunday." They're not showing up, and that's not what they do.
And I mean, also, like, having gone to Monty Tech, I know a lot of the time, they're already set up for what they're doing for the year before the year begins.
Yeah.
So it wouldn't be for a while.
You have to see the company's policy because if they don't do the labor,
Oh, yeah, it doesn't-
They're not responsible if something happens, or something was done wrong.
Something. I agree.
Well, that's why they send representatives.
Yeah, yeah.
It has to be them.
Okay, well, thank you all very much for being here this evening, and we are gonna continue now with the rest of our agenda.
Anyone's welcome to say, we are going over ARPA funds to be very thorough.
Is that a different price? Can you ask this guy the price that you did?
Um, I, I believe I did, but I don't think it came through. I already did. I did do that.
Well, I mean, yeah, we, yeah, we definitely, we, we definitely, and obviously, the prices are not what he said tonight because we, we are saying, "Oh, we want this and we want this. We wanna add that."
It's gonna change.
It's gonna change.
What I was told with the, the school, the school up in Petersham, that Aaron O'Connor actually had a lot to do with as far as he's a principal there.
Right.
And he said they saved upwards of like thirty to forty percent on self-build. So-
That's a big jump.
That was my thoughts.
And we can buy more swing.
Yeah. Yeah, or another police cruiser, whatever we need.
We'll send more swings.
You can also let the sheriff prove to use inmate labor.
Yeah. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna be moving along in the agenda, please, and so thank you again for coming. You're all welcome to stay for as long as you'd like.
Got lots of fun stuff to cover.
Okay, let's, let's move.
As soon as I hear anything, I'll make sure it gets out to everyone, yeah.
I wanted to say that I have your name subscribed to go with quotes. My name is Emily.
Hi, Emily.
Are you Tommy, not Tammy?
Tammy Martin, Tammy Martin.
And I'm Mark?
No, John.
John, you're, okay. John, Mark.
That's right.
And then Dr. Marie?
Yep.
Okay, and then question? Sandy, I'm just, I wanna make sure they'll take it. Who was the gentleman that was here today?
Uh, Nick, this is last name. He's representing playscapes, childscapes, childscapes. He may, he may see here.
Nick McGuffey.
There he is. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Oh, good luck with that.
Thank you.
You can also go on YouTube and re-watch it if you really want excitement in your life.
Yes.
Okay.
I, I know, I do that a lot for other towns. I sit there, I have like a coloring book. It's actually fun. Thank you.
I wanna apologize. Public comment, I was a little tongue-tied. It's called Barry Taxpayers Association.
I thought so. I thought maybe, I, I thought you maybe changed the name.
No, I didn't. I was, I was a little overwhelmed, I guess.
Overwhelmed.
I was overwhelmed that you wanted me to speak, with all these people.
Hey, listen, Sam, you can't, you can criticize me for a lot of things, but I never shut you up. Fair? That's fair. Okay.
So, I hope everybody would think about it, at the C E S, whether there's gonna be a sign or not or how, but it's the thirteenth. And I hope people would come and, it's a kind of a round robin. Everybody has their inputs and discussions, and we don't have to take votes, but at least we can have some, what's called transparency.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, moving along, let's take a look at the February twentieth, twenty twenty-four approval, working, seeking the approval of the meeting minutes as, as provided. These would be for public release. We have a motion?
Oh, John, we're not-
I was, I was not there.
We gotta move to approve the meeting minutes of February twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
We, I will second that motion, and those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay, we have an abstention. Those are ready for release. Moving on to the reports, would people mind if we moved, because I know we have some library people here who wanna talk a little bit about chimney repair? And probably it would be helpful for them for us to move to you for now. Okay, so let's, let's welcome the representatives of the Barry Library Association, the president, Ann Malus. And I believe she's got fifty-five different titles.
I don't know what my title is.
Well, this week, right? But anyway, Lucy Allen, who is of-
See, the general, whoever.
Yeah, right. So Lucy, Lucy Allen. They are gonna discuss with us a, a repair that needs to be done at the library. Joe Hood, the director of the library, is also here and would join us. Just to clarify why they're, why they're here, is the Barry Library Association and the town of Barry have an agreement between them regarding substantive capital repairs at the library. They have a repair that's necessary to be completed, which is something to do with the chimney that they're gonna discuss. And obviously, they're responsible for the first five thousand dollars. And then the town of Barry reimburses them for anything that's over five thousand dollars for capital repairs. So, at any rate, and you do wanna be the person to talk about the chimney, or?
Sure. Um, we have, well, just to let you know, we're undertaking a couple of, we're trying to undertake a couple of different repairs this year. We're going to be shoring up the front basement wall in the cellar later on this spring, which we've gotten through various grants, mostly from the Barry Savings Bank Charitable Foundation. So, the taxpayers will not have to pay for that. We've assessed the chimney. The chimney has fallen into a horrible state of disrepair and is at the point where bricks are going to be, start falling off the chimney. And it's a three-story chimney. It's necessary for the function of the building because the boiler system goes through that chimney. And the building is on the National Historic Register. So we would like to maintain the historical look of the building. So we've obtained a proposal by a local fire chimney service, Fire Safe Chimney Services. We tried getting a quote from a couple of other places, and my understanding is they wouldn't even come out and quote once they knew that it was a three-story structure that they'd be dealing with. The quote that we've received is for thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars.
What's the date of that quote? Is that relative to?
Yes, that was February of this year.
Oh, okay. Do, take a look at that.
Yeah.
Basically, what, what I understand is that the bricks on the chimney are falling inside of the chimney. And it continues to, you know, fall apart. And the problem would be, obviously, if we, the exhaust was no longer able to escape. That would be a problem for the people in the library. And it's also a very dangerous situation if that chimney, the chimneys on the, which was shocking to me. I ride down Pleasant Street every day, and I have to say, you see, I don't even see the chimney. Well, if you look and you do come down Pleasant Street, you go, whoa.
You will see that.
Those chimneys are in excess of ten feet high. They're coming off the roof. And so getting them repaired requires a lot of rigging and getting people up onto that roof and all of that. And then they have to take all of the stuff out and rebuild the chimney. And so it's thirty-eight thousand dollars. And we, you guys are paying the first five, and so we'd be responsible for the remaining amount, the town of Barry, correct?
I believe it's one half. I haven't looked at it.
I believe the lease indicates, from, from my review of the lease, that we are responsible for the remaining, anything over the five thousand dollars.
What is the condition of the chimney inside the building? Is it proposed for the, what runs out, seven to ten feet out of the roof? What, any idea?
We, we've had cameras and stuff go down in there.
Yeah.
We had, yeah, we had, it's, everything from the flashing to the fact that the mortar has been repaired in the past, but not correctly. So the mortar is falling apart on the bricks. It was dyed to make it look like it was repaired correctly, but it was not. So there have been repairs in the past that were not, not done correctly, which has added to the problem.
Yeah, the, the part in here that I think you're referring to, the town and trustees would work with the BLA to obtain appropriate funding when needed for larger-scale capital repairs costing over five thousand dollars. So it doesn't particularly break down, you know, how that remainder is broken up, unless it's covered somewhere else.
I think it's in there, John, right?
It'd be under a different, it'd have to be somewhere else.
Yeah.
Have you looked, investigated additional grants along with the five thousand dollars?
We constipated.
Yes, we did. We, we have applied to Mass Preservation Trust for funding, for this funding cycle. And we were not invited to put in a full grant application. This project is actually larger than what they like to fund. They like to fund a project that's twenty thousand dollars or under. This is almost forty thousand dollars. And there are very few funders that grant brick and mortar projects for historic buildings.
Oh, wait, what do you, what do you, is that the agreement between?
Yeah.
The library was turned down.
Yeah, you should have one in the pack.
It was, yes. At this time, now, we, we could go and prefer the grants on another year, and they might say yes. But it all depends on the pool of projects that they had to look at for this year, and it was not accepted.
Oh, you wouldn't be included for, for doing the work and, and then looking for a grant?
No, nothing is done, nothing is done retrospectively. It all has to be approved in advance and then done under the terms of the grant. Once you've done the work, almost no grant that I can think of will refund you for it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, you know, I'm not sure how this works with procurement. I don't know if you would know that, Tammy. Where it's over ten thousand dollars, but we're also not the main, I don't know if we'd say not the main proponent of it, but I'm, I'm assuming, you know, that that would be a factor in this as far as needing proper procurement.
Marine, and I talked about this earlier, for prevailing wage and stuff for procurement, they don't.
Well, I, I would say, because the Barry Library Association is a, is not a public entity.
Okay.
Okay, so if they were to enter into the contract that they have there as the, okay, as the signature, technically, they're an association. And I, I don't know if we then, so, so they, they have this, this, okay, agreement with whatever their company is. We simply provide an amount of money and we give it to the Barry Library Association, and they monitor and manage the repair. We don't. So we do, we do not, we don't go through public procurement.
Okay.
You, you, because it's, it's their building. It's not our building. We're, we're really, we, we get a pretty good deal in that the town has, like, free rent at a beautiful building for the library and has had for decades and decades and decades. So what this allows is for, but like you say, it's very, it's open-ended as to what is, is going to be paid for. It says here, "The town and the trustees, okay, would work with the BLA to obtain appropriate funding when needed for large-scale capital, okay, costing over five thousand. The BLA may expend their own funds on capital repairs as they see fit. The town shall pay as they, okay, and then they talk about paying utilities." Does it really give a split, like a fifty-fifty or any kind of a split? Does it, so is the assumption that BLA may expend their own funds, Bob, that we would, you would spend your five thousand or if you added more to that? Because say you spent seven thousand and then the town would then re, you know, pay, pay the rest of it to the BLA?
I don't think you can pay it to the BLA. I think you would pay the vendor.
Okay.
But then we'd have two different parties paying the vendor, or would we pay the town to pay the vendor, or?
Well, I don't think we've ever encountered this. We've-
Well, we haven't ever, that I know of.
Right, so I-
We need to get the input from probably from town council.
That's, that's kind of my concern is just, you know.
How to do it.
Right, and making sure we don't do it the wrong way. And it turns out, we were supposed to do, you know, procurement in a certain way, and now we're having, you know.
I thought they raised the limit.
Fifty thousand, yes.
Yes.
Before you have to do-
Yeah, fifty.
Okay, so this is below procurement anyway?
Well, you need at least three quotes, and the effort to put, get three quotes, I guess you guys could support that. But see, we-
Yeah, I find it unlikely we can't find other people to quote this. I really do.
I mean, we can, we can absolutely put out a RFP and request for proposals and-
You would probably be get more responsive. You would.
Yeah, absolutely.
The only, the only thing that I'm concerned about, this is a private entity. This is not a capital asset of the town. And for us to be doing procurement on a capital asset that's not ours makes no sense to me. That you, we would be better off to, the BLA would go through, you know, a series, working with Tammy, say, okay, get three quotes or something like that, because when it be, it's not our asset.
Well, I, I think that the problem we have is the scaffolding. Anytime we try to do anything up high on that third floor and the roof and the chimneys.
It's very expensive.
We have to get, you know, just a scaffolding for somebody to look up there, and nobody wants to come and do that. So, when you're talking about, this is why we have a project getting, problem getting quotes on a third-story project. They, people just don't want to come up with a scaffolding and do it.
Well, we've been able to use.
Where there's one, there's more.
Hopefully.
Well.
It'd be great if we could get more quotes.
I mean, I guess, so, did, did this company do a full inspection? Is there an inspection report?
There's an inspection report.
I'm assuming we could get quotes based on a, on a report, so that we don't need to.
Here are some, just a few pictures from it, it's not the full report.
Is that all from the ground, or did they go up there?
No, those pictures from up there.
They went up with the fire truck.
Yeah.
The town fire truck on the ladder, on the roof.
Okay.
Just, um, as you probably know from previous presentations, this is historic photograph of the library when it was first built. So, it just clearly shows the chimneys, which don't show now because of so much foliage there. And this is out there what the 10-foot height they are now.
Hmm.
And this is coming down Pleasant Street last, uh, last winter. You can still see that the two chimneys are visible there.
See?
Excuse me. Some time ago, the library hired someone to do some copperwork. Some copperwork on top of the chimney. And I have the business guy, I'm sure you do as well. And, and they used whatever scaffolding they used seemed to work very well. It didn't appear to be troublesome because I watched them do the installation.
It's, it's just, it's just for a small kind of project, what they tell us, at least. They'll say, well, in order for us to get up there even, it's, you know, this upfront cost of whatever, whatever. So, they, when you look at the brickwork they have to do, it's, if it were on the ground, it would be a lot less expensive. But because they have to get up there, and, and when they get up there, it's not like somebody who's doing their own home and doesn't have to, like, belt up and all this stuff. Sometimes they can do it with a lift. When we had the roof done, I know the lift was used. But my concern just is, whatever the split cost is, um, the town really has to be making this donation to the association because this is not a capital asset. I mean, that's my opinion, um, it's not our capital asset. And I mean.
Can I see a picture of those?
Of, of the repair, of the problems?
Isn't that a question?
Well, no, just the chimneys themselves. I've never really looked at them.
No, I know, I know there are some people that don't think they're terribly obvious, but.
She's looking at me. But now I go down the street, I see them every time.
Now that I mentioned it, yeah.
Claire, do you have a question?
I don't even know if I'm allowed to ask a question, but.
Oh, yeah, of course.
Is there, in this proposal from Fire Safe, is there a kind of warranty? Because you did say that there were some repairs done previously that were done ill-will. If the town is going to make such a substantial donation to a subset, sub entities.
Yeah.
Is there a warranty to protect that, you know? Especially if this is the only quote being had so far.
It's, it's.
Well, we.
They're gonna send the quote.
Yes, separately in here.
There is, there, because of the age of the chimneys, there is a, I think, a limited warranty.
Yes.
Because the chimney's going down through the building, that they have pictures of the internal, of, of, of the inside, um, obviously. One chimney does not, does not serve a purpose. There's no exhaust coming out of that and so forth. So, that one, we're not too concerned about. Once it's rebuilt, you know, it's cosmetic. The other one, however, is critical to the HVAC system.
It is. I don't, this.
Dennis?
Are they gonna cap these chimneys?
No, one, one will just be, you know, it needs to.
No, I understand that, but I'm not a cap.
I think that was in the quote, wasn't it?
Yes, they have to by code though.
Yep, that's in the quote.
Thank you.
You could always get somebody with a phone to go up there and look at it.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's already a report that was, so I assume, you know, we paid for a report from Fire Safe, and that's what that is?
Well, the Barry Library Association paid for it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the, so, yes. But there, there is a report, so that report could be used to procure, uh, not procure, to, to get.
Yes, yes, more quotes.
Get more quotes without other people having to go up there.
Yes, absolutely.
They can provide quotes based on what's listed as needed.
The whole thing.
Yeah.
Are they gonna line the chimney?
Um, I don't think so.
Might be something to think about.
The other thing is, is have, if this is a boiler issue, have they investigated the cost of other heating methodologies? If this is not something that can be done?
That is on the agenda.
Well, the, the, the thing of it is, it's simply an exhaust for the furnace downstairs. Uh, the boiler is probably older than we'd, we'd like.
Yes.
The HVAC system functions kind of well. Fair?
Yeah, that's, that's fair.
And, I mean, I, I mean, the buildings, Lucy, how old is the building?
It was built in 1886, 1886, and opened in 1887, so 137 years.
137 years old, and the chimney is 137 years old. And it's, it's, it has, it's, it's falling in on itself.
No, the reason I ask is if, if they're looking at $38,000, and you put in a brand-new chimney with liners, caps, the, whatever the procurement is, and then the boiler goes, then it's a further expense that they may have to come and seek more funds. So, like, she was saying.
Well, if we have to upgrade the HVAC systems, okay, there's no question that the HVAC system in this building is in need of assistance in repair. The HVAC system in the town hall is certainly needs assistance, okay? So, I would say that, that the benevolent neglect, okay, of, of our, our assets is troubling. And, um, this is a, a piece of that, but it's not the whole of what needs to be done HVAC-wise in all of our buildings. I mean, I know no one wants to talk about it, but as we've, you know, gone around and, and sort of, you know, looked at the Henry Woods Building and the fire escapes, that we have those issues and so forth. So, I would just say that this is not the first or the last time that we will be, whether we use ARPA money or end up at the town meeting, talking about upgrades in, in our, in our capital assets. If it wasn't, quite frankly, that the town hall almost burned down, it would probably be falling down. Because we just haven't, as a community, really stepped up and done the kind of things we need to for those assets.
So, uh, back to this project, timeline-wise, what, where is it at? Because I know this is combined with a different project, is that right?
No, not combined.
Or not combined?
I think this is only good for 30 days.
I don't, it's been for a good.
Okay.
But I don't know what the timeline is for the chimney.
So, it's not that this needs to be at the same time necessarily? Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify, yeah.
The chimney, um, Mr. Walling wanted to start the project in April or May, but I, you know, we need to figure out the funding.
Right.
My worry is, um, in that quote, it takes it down to the roof line. And what happens if they find that we have issues underneath? That's a ni- that's a nice surprise, actually. Now you don't have a chimney, and you got a big, a big dollar amount going down.
Right.
It says that this proposal is guaranteed for 30 days only. Acceptance of the proposal after 60 days requires a second visit and additional costs.
I mean, can we access the chimney inside? Um, can we, can they look at, before it goes through the roof to see if the, the.
We, we have a video of that, of it going down.
With a camera?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I'd have, I.
We do have a video of that, I mean, that, that company does.
Yes.
Of the whole thing. They put cameras down and so forth.
Yeah, I'm just worried about the condition of the, the structure itself, going down to the inside, meaning, will it support? I mean, if it's falling apart, is it just because of the weather, or is it, is it, you know, age or water?
A good question for them.
Yeah.
Their recommendation is that it, is they would go to seven-foot chimneys rather than 10 outside of the roof. At least, that's what it says here.
Probably because when it was designed originally, they burned wood or coal.
Need more draft, guys? More draft?
Yeah, you, you put it up and it.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
It throws the smoke away.
Yeah, good point. So, at any rate, what's the board's position on this, and where do we go from here? We're, um, obviously, we have 60 days, when, when, they gave you this on the 16th. So, so, we've got another, are, are we looking for other proposals? What's the pleasure here?
Well, I mean, if we're confident we don't need other proposals for procurement, um, I mean, we need to determine, you know, what means we're using to fund it, if it's ARPA, or, you know, if it's going to town meeting, that's, you know.
I, I would, I would, I would say, well, we should check it out with, with council. But in my opinion, this is a fee for our use of this building. In other words, we have some obligation to assist, because we, we pay no rent. And we dump a whole big expensive, you know, wonderful library in there, into this building. And we basically have always tried to take care of all the roofing and all the repairs for the last 137 years, right? So, now we say, okay, we need, we need some help on this chimney repair. So, if, if the money is going really to the association to do the job, then procurement is off the table. We're just paying the fee. But I would ask the town council for that.
Yeah, I, I do think that, that makes sense. Where in the agreement from, um, I'm curious, oh, 20, 2019, so this isn't that old of a agreement. Um, it is under occupancy fee, the portion that covers this. So, I, I think that is a fair argument to say, you know, these costs are the occupancy fee.
Yeah, I mean, we, we pay the fee. Because, but that would leave you people, um, you know, um, getting, managing the project, not us.
Yeah. Okay, so, so essentially, you're saying to us, this is the fee to continue using the library per the agreement? I mean, essentially.
Well, we're.
So, it's us, so we need to provide you with the funds to do this.
Yeah.
As far as I, as far as I'm reading the contract.
So, what you're saying is you, you don't agree with, um, you know, getting a couple of different quotes?
I think they should, if they can.
Well, that's what, that's what.
But I, I don't think I get, you know, I, I think if you're renting an apartment, you don't get to tell your landlord how many people they have to ask to, you know, get quotes for him before they replace a window. You know what I mean?
Yeah, John, but it's a job, that's, you know what I mean? This is, this is something that, you know, it should be let out to the two or three different, I would.
I, I absolutely think it should. I completely agree with you.
Any other, any other discussion?
Yeah, I, I, I think you're absolutely right that it should be. I'm saying, I don't know that we have the authority to tell them to do that.
We can, we can certainly try to do it, whether we get them.
Tammy, can you, um, how about the, the register? Can we help them get something in the register, but are, that's really just for the public sector, isn't it?
Yes, so if we did the central, we can definitely go ahead and do it, but then you have to do the advertising. Who's gonna pay for all that? I mean, it's costly, you gotta.
Yeah, um, from your procurement background, what would be the easiest way for a non-public agency to get three quotes?
You would just call them and see if they can, you know, come up and give you a quote.
Which is what you did, as I understand.
Well, just try. We don't get them, we don't get them.
I mean, you, I, I'm just looking at this, I'm just, this is a question, by the way. It says Fire Safe Chimney Services. Are you strictly going after chimney services? I mean, there's mason, masons out there, I mean, you don't have to be.
We did, we did, you did talk to three or four masons, but they didn't even want to get near it.
They don't want to get up, they don't have the scaffolding, that's the thing.
Right.
I do have that little deal that they don't have, they don't want to do it. Did they ever, did they respond back to you? Any of them saying that?
Well, it, one, two didn't even respond back to me. Um, the other ones were like, it's probably gonna be around $85,000, and I don't, it's not gonna be for years.
And you have that in writing where you could?
No, I don't.
Yeah, I, I mean, so, just in my own personal experience, um, I got a quote from Fire Safe for my chimney. And last year, a mason used scaffolding at my house to, to redo it for, you know, a, a small fraction of what Fire Safe quoted me.
Yeah.
But alternatively, we've had masons who've said, we would do it, but we don't have the scaffolding. And Fire Safe has the scaffolding. So, I think that's.
Finding where that is, yeah.
Being, having a residence of one or two stories and a, you know, a 40, 30-story building. But we, we can certainly, what I feel is, I'll try to get them.
I just, I would just.
I think you should.
Yeah, I would just bring your attention to the 60-day. I want to make sure you, um, you know, you're, you're back here for us to give us a number. Because after that, they are indicating the contract's null, or their proposal is null.
I, I've been in contact with Mr. Walling to, to indicate to him that we are having funding issues, so.
I don't spend $38,000 of my own money very easily. That's why I don't let, um, that's why taxpayers' money, I like to make sure.
We all try to be as personable as possible.
And, and I know a lot of the times with those deadlines they put on those, a lot of them are to, to cover themselves if prices go up in those 60 days. But a lot of times, these, those can be extended.
And they want to figure out what their jobs are.
Right, right.
And this is a, this is a relatively big job.
Yep. So, I, I get why those, those deadlines are in there, to protect themselves when they give out a quote. But, uh, so. If I may.
Oh.
Marie, Marie called me the fourth selectman sometimes.
Yes, I do call you my fourth selectman.
I guess, to put a little joviality into this, the hand, what, what would you, how would your father handle this?
He'd do it himself. Am I wrong?
No.
Wouldn't he? He'd do it himself.
He'd have me hauling the brick up to him.
You're right about that.
That's the way I think, too.
So, I, I guess the question to the board, for the board really, to figure out is how do we want to go about, you know, securing these funds? How do we want to, by what means would we appropriate these?
I mean, I would look to appropriate these right now. I'd probably recommend ARPA. Just because we have the access to that. And, um, probably if they can, you know, you know, once you come back and say, okay, these are the three things. It looks like it's going to be 38, whatever. And then, um, you say, we're gonna give you, we're gonna use at least $5,000 toward it, or we're gonna use $8,000, whatever you're gonna do. And then we have a number, and, because we're not gonna manage the project. It's your asset. Because you insure your, your own asset, it's yours, it's not ours. We're just paying occupancy fee. It has to include, at this point, a chimney that needs to be repaired. So, get the best price you can.
So, I know I'm, I'm jumping a little bit ahead in our agenda, looking through our list of items we've spent ARPA funds on, but I don't see anything in here for the, the, uh, the library.
No, we haven't done much.
As much as we have for other, you know, as we're talking about, you know, providing something for the kids through the playgrounds. We've provided different things to different departments. So, I think it's, it's something worth considering, for sure, from ARPA funds.
Yeah.
Sure, the kids use the library, that's for sure.
That's for sure. Oh, they, they love going there, my kids at least.
Oh, they all do, I think.
Good job, y'all, as always. Good job.
Yeah.
That wouldn't be an issue to use our proposed, okay.
I, I mean, I, I think.
I mean, in fact, and quite frankly, as he points out, we haven't done anything for the library.
With the ARPA funds.
With ARPA funds. And we've done a lot for the police, a lot for the fire. We've done a lot for, maybe a playground. We've done the things for the school. We've done a new parking lot for the schools.
Even Monty Tech is on here.
Yeah, and what we've tried to do is to do the, a large capital stuff that, quite frankly, would be really hard for us to handle under the, under the levy.
Mm-hmm.
So, it'd be great then.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's, you know, I think ideally, we would want to come back to it next time we meet. Give it an opportunity for a public comment or anything like that to come in. But I, I think I'd be overall in favor of, of adding that to our ARPA list. I know we do need to go through all of our ARPA and make sure we know where it's at, and then make sure we're not, you know, make sure that we have every duck lined up in a row before the end of the year, when we need to have it all appropriated. So, but I think I, I, I'd be amenable to that as well.
So, if you can go and try to get a few more quotes, and if you can.
That would be great, yeah.
Whatever, but if you can, hopefully, there'll be.
And get a statement in writing if they're not going to quote.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yes, that's very good to have, so then you can, it shows that you, did you do diligence in reaching out and getting your quotes. So, if they have it saying that they can't do it, it's very important for your files.
Because if you manage the project, because it's your asset, um, you're, you're not paying prevailing wage. You're a private entity. That's a, that's a very different quote to get than if you're, you have to pay prevailing wage. Because it's not our asset. We shouldn't be paying prevailing wage to fix it. We should be paying the occupancy fee.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you for, thank you for coming in.
Thank you for the information.
Thank you for the playground, um, sorry about that, took so long, guys.
Well, we're.
Well, you had some good input, boy, so.
Lucy, any idea about signs, uh?
Yes, the Historical Commissions meeting Wednesday afternoon, and we are looking at a couple of estimates.
Perfect. Perfect, okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, I think we, I think we're back to, Tammy, we're back to you with administrative report, town administrative report.
All right, so just a few things, Jennifer Doyle Breen has reached out to me. I was just, I wanted to check when a good time would be for her to come and talk about the dam again, so I can schedule a meeting. I know you had mentioned that that's something you wanted to do in our last select board meeting, so I could get some times and dates that would work for everyone.
Are we talking about the old reservoir dam?
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, we had, after our meetings with the community people who were concerned about, you know, the destroying the dam, or, you know, and removing it, blah, blah, blah. We did indicate to them that due to their interest and enthusiasm, that we would look at the, the maintenance issue, how much it would cost us, and whether or not we could get a courtesy, what do I want to say? Courtesy easement, so that we could have public access to the, the property, so that the complete community people could use it, because if the community is, cannot use it, then we probably shouldn't spend a lot of time worrying about.
Right, so I guess I'm just looking for dates and times, what days would work best.
And so the state will come back out, and, and, because I know that we did indicate that our desire to rescind our vote of, I think it was last July, and go to asking them to repair it, and with the provisos, that there would be a community member who would provide us with the courtesy easement. Because without the easement, we probably would do something differently.
Yeah, I mean, well, essentially, what we would need is if, if the land is donated, it would, there would still be a substantial cost in actually accepting the donation, as dumb as that sounds. Or, you know, there's also the possibility that land could be taken, but that's a very messy and expensive road to go down.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, either of those options would require approval at town meeting. So I think realistically, what we need to do is determine what the next step would be if we want to go forward with the partial breach, that would maintain a significant portion of the dam, keep it at its current level, but reduce the risk. That was kind of where we ended that conversation at, and really establish what the next step would be, and bring that to the town at the next town meeting, to see if the town is in support of this financially, and not just in support of it in theory.
And I, and I would say, too, that the gentleman, Mike Perkas, who was here, talked about, I think he's on the historical, something, we just appointed him to, that there is some move afoot that the Audubon may be interested in doing, you know, accessing some of the property, so I don't know if that's really true, or if that's going to happen, but. I, we have a meeting on the eighteenth, we have, we can have a meeting on the twenty-fifth of March.
Eighteenth of the, I think we're pretty, on the twenty-fifth, I think eighteenth is pretty full.
Well, the twenty-fifth is not a regularly scheduled meeting, we could have one on the twenty-fifth.
Okay, so I can check with her if that works for everyone?
Or the eighteenth or the twenty-fifth, do you think the twenty-fifth?
You, you tell me what works for all of you.
Oh.
I could do either of those. I mean, eighteenth, we already have a meeting scheduled. I'm, I know there's a lot of business that we're going over this time of year, so if we need to add another meeting to the twenty, I'm fine with that.
Would the twenty-fifth be when the DPW meets, though?
Nope, no.
Okay.
No, DPW would be next week on the tenth.
Oh, okay.
I'm looking at that count.
Oh, yeah, right, right.
Right, it's March, yes.
Yeah.
All right, so I'll give her a call and see if I can get her to come out then, and just kind of go over it again, kind of.
Sounds good.
Yep.
And forward to us.
And make sure the public knows, because we had quite a group of people when we did talk about that before.
So who is that that would be coming out?
Uh, Jennifer Doyle Breen.
Okay, and she's with the office?
Department of Conservation Recreation.
Oh. I was assuming it was going to be the Office of Dam Safety?
Well, that too.
Yeah.
So, yeah, Office of Dam Safety, the whole thing. Department of Conservation Recreation.
I didn't realize the Office of Dam Safety was under the DCR, okay, that makes sense.
Yep.
I should have known that, that's right.
That's okay.
Okay.
All right, and then a few things, Senior Center, we completed the locks that we had talked about last time we had our select board meeting. We did have a few heating issues, Marcus come out, and we fixed that today. So it was just an electric controller, and Friday there were a few issues, but it's finally fixed, so that's good, just wanted to record that. Maureen had brought me some quotes, we're going to start getting quotes on the town hall for painting, I'm going to get some quotes for that, and quotes for our fire escapes for the Henry Woods Building in the town hall. And John and I are going to go over One Stop for Growth, it's a grant out there with Central Mass Regional Planning, and we're going to see what we can do for that, and start looking into that, see where we can go, and start expanding. And then, the last thing I want to talk about is the ARPA funds. You'll see that I gave everyone, it's just a draft of the ARPA funds. I went through it, and I put down a list of everything that has been expended, and then if you go to the third page, you're going to see amount that's expended, what we've received for revenue since we've FY twenty-one. And then I have remainder here, but then if you look at the next one, you'll see balance of ARPA funds. And I put a few things that are in lingo, I put down the ambulance playground, I just get an estimate, you'll see, and the police cruiser, I'm not sure, we're still searching for minutes to see where that is. So again, this is just a rough draft, I just wanted everyone to look at it, kind of go through it, and I figured we could finalize it next select board meeting that we have, anything that you may see, maybe there's any issues, you can let me know, and I can dig a little deeper into it.
So at this point, are we looking to determine what items will fill out the remainder?
That you can do discussion for, too, that's why this I said, so you guys, I have the discussion for remainder ARPA funds, you guys can also, I figured you can talk about that, too, and see where you guys want to end up on that end, so.
Yeah, I think that was another one, if, if, you know, if we're planning to address this again next meeting, you know, having that amount that's still available after these things that we've, we're assuming, you know.
There's a police cruiser on there, I know that Greg Balakonis did, added that, took that out of the, of budget of the police department, put it into ARPA spending in order to make the numbers work for the town, annual town meeting. So, and looking back in, in records, we found that.
Yeah.
I do not believe, we may not have formally voted that.
Right, I think that's the question, is did we formally vote that?
All of the stuff, and then we can obviously.
And obviously, the playground number could change based on the discussion tonight. There was a, a number put in here for two hundred thousand, which I think reflected what was shown up there, but obviously, what was shown up there, you know, take some things away, put a bunch of other things in, and see where that comes out.
Right.
And I have, I also brought, if anybody wanted, all the invoices that we've had that coincide with this, I also took the town accountant assisting me with all this, and when I was doing it, I made sure that all the amounts equaled, so everything should be right at the date with the town accountant's help and providing all that to me, so.
Uh, so just for anyone.
I actually made some extra copies, if anybody wants, Sandy has them.
I'd like to see a copy of that.
That's what they're for?
Yeah.
Um, so, just to recap what it says, the, the amount we've had in ARPA so far is one million, six hundred, sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred, forty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Yep, that's our revenue.
That was the revenue.
We have expended from that one million, forty-four thousand.
Nope, no.
Nope, oh, I'm sorry, that's the remainder.
Yeah.
Oh, wow, wow, that's.
Much better, right?
Yeah, that's, wow, okay, we've expended six hundred, twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents. The remainder, which does not include.
Yeah, right.
An ambulance, a police car, and a playground, which still need to be finalized.
Right.
So without those items, the remainder is one million, forty-four thousand, nine dollars and one cent.
That's right.
But we, we, we do have a commitment to the ambulance.
Yep, we made a commitment to the ambulance, the, I believe the police cruiser.
Police cruiser as well.
And then the playground, we are obviously working on.
Obviously thinking about what it's going to look like, so, okay.
And then this, all of this needs to be allocated by the end of this year, and expended by the end of the following year.
Correct, as long as you're in a re, an agreement, you can, you know, spend it up to twenty-six.
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
And if you see any, you know, mistakes, let me know, or anything that you can fix.
And do you know, do you know what happens if we, for any money we don't spend? Does that go back to the state, or to the federal government?
Goes right back to the.
You know, for none of that's happened.
So you want to make sure you spend it, that's what they want you to do anyways. You have December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four to do it, and then we have two years to complete. You know, we just, we have to put it into them, let them know what we've accounted for.
Yep, so we can definitely start looking at ways to upgrade some of the facilities and things. Dennis Fiotta?
Well, while you're talking about ARPA funds, I know I may ask to be on the agenda, I'm not up here for what I'm about to ask, but the nine eleven committee is, is on the agenda, I think, for the meeting of the eighteenth.
Right.
And we're, we're going to be asking the town to help us fund the rest of the nine eleven memorial.
Yeah.
So I don't know, we're going to be looking, we've spent every penny we've raised so far, which is around fifteen thousand, saved a lot of money with labor, the guys did on your own. But we, to finish the project, we're looking at a minimum thirty-five more thousand dollars. And I have been sending letters out to all kinds of places, looking for funds.
I, yeah, I know, I know, we talked, I actually sent some info to the state senate to see if we can get some money earmarked, and have it heard back on that.
Well, I missed out on a shroud grant by hours.
Right.
They wouldn't say, okay, you missed it by eight hours, and they wouldn't, you know, look the other way on it. Rules are rules, I get it. And there's no guarantee to get money from that anyway.
Right. Dennis, do you, do you think that the thirty-five thousand dollars is really it? If you can get that money?
Now, we got quotes.
Okay, okay, and can you tell me, like, what, what is left? I know you got to put the steel.
Well, yeah, the pedestal, the ground structure's been completed.
There, yeah.
The shoring up for the other aspects of the monuments, there's three other aspects of it. If you're looking at the monument, you see the twin towers sitting there. Directly behind that will be where the steel rails will be.
Okay.
And that'll be sitting on pedestals, and on both sides, one side will have encapsulated the piece of the Pentagon building, and the other one will be for the Pennsylvania site. These pieces of granite will also be inscribed, we're going to have a couple of brass plaques on there as well. But we've gotten quotes, Jason Benoit was really instrumental in getting the quotes for it, and he haggled with them over it, and gone to drop almost fifteen thousand dollars off their original price. So from the aspect of what's left is thirty-five. And that should do it, I mean, we still have paper bricks that people can buy. That in itself wasn't going to fund the project.
Right, right.
The Barry Savings Bank Foundation was kind enough to give us a couple of donations. Tunnels from Towers in New York gave us five thousand dollars. I've written to the Kraft Foundation, I mean, a bunch of them, and, you know, just haven't gotten any feedback from them.
Have you, I think you put another grant into the Barry Savings Charitable Foundation?
We met last week, and one of, Mike Wood put that in, opened it, because we've got like two hundred dollars left in the kitty.
Right, right.
Of the fifteen thousand, I mean, we've got it pretty close.
Right.
And we're looking to put a little more in that, so we can button up some other things that we're doing.
Right.
Yep.
I thi, I think that that foundation is going to be meeting within the next couple of weeks. So they.
And we've spent every dollar.
Oh, I, no, I don't, I don't, I don't doubt it, yeah.
And we've saved quite a bit of money with, some of the guys are really good at the, the woodwork and stuff like that.
And you guys grew grass around that monument so fast, it was amazing to me.
I know, it planted right in, it's nice.
Amazing.
If you look at it, it's tapered, so that sits up a little bit, and it, you know, so it'll drain,
Good drainage, yeah.
Drain away from it, it won't, you know, collect water there. But when it's done, it's, it's really going to be nice.
Okay, so I'll keep track of what happens at the Barry Charitable Foundation stuff, and then, you know, we can talk about it, we'll talk about it again.
Correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, but the town has not put any money towards the monument at this point.
Oh, that's good to know.
It would have been from private donations and the paper bricks people have purchased, which we've had a bunch of them delivered, we're just waiting until the weather gets nicer, and then Gideon Landscape is going to pull the blanks and put the inscribed ones in there. And that's an open-ended thing.
Yes.
There'll be no end to that.
Now, tell me, tell me, who, who can buy these?
Anybody.
I know, but when, when you say, okay, so Maureen Marshall buys one. Is it, is, is it just, what do I, so they say, oh, yeah, Maureen Marshall was a sponsor, and so they know I paid money toward it?
Well, you can.
I mean, because I, I didn't, I'm not a first responder, I never went anywhere for nine eleven.
No, 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 we, I'll explain this in simple terms.
Okay.
People that served since nine eleven from this town, that's what that's for.
Right.
There were two monuments planned. The second monument for the first responders was to be put for the new fire station.
Yeah.
If we don't get an new fire station, it will go at one of the existing fire stations. We have the one uptown here, and then we have the one down by the old Barry, whoa. I've just lost my train of thought.
Uh, the, the different types of pavers, there.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Anybody can buy a paver for themselves or anybody. We've reserved the Pentagon area of that monument for the servicemen and women.
Okay, got it.
The walkway up to it.
Could be anybody.
You could honor your grand uncle, you could honor.
Or your father, or anything.
Yeah, and there's limits, what's really nice about the, the website for this, is you can create that right, right in front of you, and see it. And we've limited the insignias that go on it, with all the branches of the service, the nine eleven, there's like a national nine eleven logo they use that's in the shape of the Pentagon, and there's the twin towers on it, that is also acceptable. And like Merchant Marine, this, this new Space Force they have, you could put any of those. We included the old Army Air Corps one on there, because some people's grandparents served in the Army Air Corps, and we can add more if necessary. We just didn't want anything other than pertaining to nine eleven. We didn't want Disney's Mickey Mouse on, on there, you know, it's just not appropriate. So we limited that, but you can order, you could order one with your own name on it, if you want, and put like the nine eleven logo on it. You know, you could buy the regular size, and then there's a double size. If you wanted to, you know, sponsor a larger one.
Yeah.
You know, say from the Marshall family, and put, you know, that logo on of your choice.
Okay, gotcha.
So sponsored ones are in the walkway, but then the Pentagon is reserved for service members?
Yeah, everybody is reserved strictly on eleven bedrooms in town.
Right, right.
There's quite a few.
Well, yeah, excellent.
Some of them were wounded, too.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you very much for giving us the number.
Thanks for letting me say something.
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, no, no problem.
Great money, yeah.
Well, I know you're trying to wrap the project up and would like to get it done for the two-hundred-and-fiftieth, and I certainly agree with you, yeah.
You know, and do it on September eleventh.
Right, oh, good idea, yeah.
It would be a vote.
Is ARPA money eligible for this type of a fundraiser?
What is the cost of the pavers?
Oh, off the top of my head.
Sixty-five?
Yeah, there's two, two, one is for the, one price for the smaller one, and a double.
Fifty and sixty-five.
I think it's forty and sixty-five.
Fifty and sixty-five.
Fifty and sixty-five.
Fifteen dollars and sixty.
Fifty.
Oh, I was going to say, wow, that was cheap, okay, fifty, fifty for the single, and.
Sixty-five.
Sixty for the double.
Oh, go with the double. Much more.
More land for your butt.
Much more, yeah, much for ground space.
And you can fit more wood in on it, if you want it.
Yeah, yeah, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We may be talking about large numbers, but I don't think fifteen dollars is a small.
Okay, okay, so Tammy, I'm sorry, we kind of interrupted your presentation, so.
No, that, that was all I had to say.
Okay, so we have, we have ARPA money that we have before us to review, so that we can, by next, next meeting, make sure we have all the votes, we'll check our minutes, and what we don't have, we vote.
Yes.
Gotcha, okay, any other questions on that?
No.
Okay, select board reports, John, start with you.
Uh, sure. Um, I think primarily working with Tammy on different grant options where, you know, like she mentioned, looking into the one-stop grant. We're planning to put in an application for that. Um, Tammy also took a class with, uh, for complete street funding, so we're looking at what it would take to update our tier-two to a more recent funding. Um, should be talking about that at the next DPW commission meeting as well, to get some, some more information on how to progress that grant funding option.
Okay, I'll say.
Yeah, I think that's.
Mr. Venus.
No, I have nothing.
Mr. Venus has nothing, okay. Um, I would, I would just, you know, bring to everyone's attention and remember as we prepare, prepare for town meeting. A lot of mu, a lot of Tammy's time is going into meeting with the Budget and Finance Committee and putting together the budget for FY twenty-five. I know that probably a lot of you spend less time than I do watching state revenues and looking at unrestricted local aid and what the nose numbers look like. Looking at what, uh, what is happening with school funding and so forth, and I would tell you, we should worry a little. The revenues are, for FY twenty-four are well below.
Are you saying we should worry?
We should worry. Because FY twenty-four revenues are mu, that much lower than predicted. And in addition to that, they've already cut some parts of budgets. One thing that they cut in the town of Barry was a percentage of the amount
For the two-fiftieth.
For the two-hundred-and-fiftieth, I think fifteen thousand less. They would give thirty thousand and take it away fifteen. So I know that that's kind of a little hit for the two-hundred-and-fiftieth that we're probably gonna have to help them, um, fix, fix. Unrestricted local aid, looking at FY twenty-five is no gift. I mean, with the governor's budget, doesn't do much of anything. I think there's a three percent increase in that.
Yeah.
From the governor's budget.
Mm-hmm.
I do have access to and spend a lot of time at the state level legislatively, and there is some move afoot for a rural communities package that has been put forward by Senator Cumberford, Senator Mark, and Representative Whipps, and Representative, um, Blay, okay, Natalie Blay. Good stuff in there for rural communities, and so, um, I did, I testified on that bill and, and hope that maybe we will, we'll see some results from that. They, they've made impassioned pleas, those, you know, the western part of the state. Good news for schools is that the new interim commissioner is from Western Mass. Unheard of. Um, so that is going to help us with what's happening in the senate. The senate is trying to change chapter seventy reimbursements to the towns because the towns like Barry don't get their fair share of chapter seventy funding. And all of the increases are pushed to the locals. That is not the case in the cities, believe me. And so, the, the work at the, at the state level for the community is important, and I know I spend my time worrying about that. But I know, Tammy, as you begin with the finance committee putting together FY twenty-five, it's not easy.
No.
It's not easy because, um, we know that there are increases in our cost centers that we probably can't just say, well, we're not doing that. We, we know we've negotiated new contracts with the DPW, where we continue to work with the police department. Um, we have unrepresented employees, obviously, that we need to think, what will the, that increase look like? Um, and then trying to make all the numbers work. I don't envy you, Tammy, I don't envy the Budget and Finance Committee as it's, does its work. But, um, if you need us to either be present at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting to offer our wonderful insights from the select board, we'd be happy to do that. Um, that is their bailiwick, and we try to keep out of it as much as we can since they are elected or appointed to do that. Uh, but you have a ton of work to do in the next four months.
Yes.
Wow, I mean, a ton of work. And I compliment you on trying, I mean, you've talked with me about several op, grant options and so forth. And I did talk with, um, uh, regional planning today about the town hall and about Henry Woods.
Yep.
And told them all of the things that we have as problems.
Yeah, I gave them your number.
Yeah, okay. And, um, also, uh, we know that the, um, fire escapes, both at Henry Woods and at the town hall, have been rendered, uh, okay, we shouldn't be using them.
Mm-hmm.
So as a result, we do have a couple of names of ironworking companies that come in and evaluate and look at what it would cost us to fix those fire escapes. It's really scary to think that, um, we have people working on the third floor in Henry Woods. And really, the fire escape might be more deadly than the fire that they're trying to run away from. So, uh, I know we have to address that. So those are things brought to our attention by our building department, appropriately so, um, but worrisome at any rate. So we're working, we're, we're working on that, and that may be a place where we have to look and say, we have to have some ARPA money for that.
And, and I do wanna thank you for talking with them. You know, with the, the master plan, as it's getting wrapped up, they're looking for some information from some people, and I assumed you would know more about the, uh, some of the conditions of some of those buildings, so I gave them your number. But I appreciate you taking the time to talk with them.
No, not a problem.
I was also curious with, um, in your, your travels through the state legislature, whether it's, you know, um, there was something that had been mentioned quite a while ago, um, back when Ann Goby was our state rep, uh, state senator, and, um.
No, Mr. Durantis, yeah.
Right, uh, but there was something that I believe she was working on about getting, uh, funds for towns around the Quavon, a fee for the water, if there was any progress on it, or anything like that?
There is progress on that, and through the, through the, um, through the treasurer's office.
Okay.
And, um, also through the, this rural, rural communities bill that's there. Because pilot money, payment in lieu of taxes, okay, we, twenty-seven percent of the Barry, all of Barry's land is, okay. We can't tax it, we can't build on it, and now sometimes we can't even walk on it.
Right.
Okay, and so we get an amount of money for, for that land, just like Hardwick gets some, because we, we're protecting the watershed. And so the, the case that we have made under, under the rural communities thing is, what they do is they pay us per acre. And they pay us a fee of what they say our land is worth per acre. And then if you go look in, in Wellesley, where they have a running track, okay, and that, it's on state land, they pay per acre ten, twenty times more than they pay for acres for us.
Well, drinking water's not necessary, right?
Exactly, and so I say to, and so, and so our, and so our issue is in rural communities, is we are protecting the water supply of the vast amount of the population that's in the eastern part of the state. And to say that our land is worth less than, because we're not in Wellesley or Weston or whatever. Um, so we have good language in the rural communities bill, and Mass Municipal is supportive of that, for obvious reasons. Mass Municipal represents the small towns.
Yeah.
And the small towns are getting clobbered, um, with all of the things we need to do. And, and I mean, and it's, it's our own fault that we haven't spent more time taking care of our capital assets. I, I understand, just like the playgrounds and everything, it's our own fault. But now as we try to pay, you know, play, it's very expensive to fix what we haven't, what we've ignored. So, uh, just to let you know that, that your town officials working very, very hard at the state level for rural communities work and rural schools money. And I know we're meeting tomorrow at, by invitation, um, to, with, at the Quavon, with the Quavon people regarding their first iteration of their budget. And I would tell you, remember, the first iteration of their budget is predicated on no good information from the state. All they've got is the, the governor's budget, and the governor's budget is here. And when the house begins to work on it, they, they kiddingly say this, this is the governor's budget. They put it in the trash and start over. So what we really have to be concerned about is what's happening in April, and what happens in administration and finance. What are, what are they putting in the rural schools? Well, uh, or rural schools money, 'cause Quavon is a huge recipient of rural schools, based, so. But then they've, they've made it difficult for them to use the, the money, so we're, we'll work on that. But, so, just to let you know that lots is happening for rural communities, uh, Mass Municipal is, is really helping us, which is a good thing. Because quite frankly, Barry alone is not very powerful, but all of those towns in Western Mass, um, it makes a difference if we're all together on something. So, and, and, and the, uh, and the Lieutenant Governor, Driscoll, she's sort of, really works really well out here in Western Mass, believe it or not. And we have Ann Goby now, and Director of Rural Affairs, never even had that position before. And Ann Goby is well-known to Barry, well-known to our needs, so we, we're happy about that. So I sit and worry about that piece of the budget. I know you're worrying about your piece of the budget. Mine is about revenues and trying to make sure that, um, the revenues that we've been promised that we get and the revenues that we are negotiating for at the state level, that our voices are heard. So, that's, that's my, okay, addition. Correspondence, um, I know we have a letter, I think, thanking the fire department for their assistance in the Hardwick fire. Correct? And, uh, so we thank them for, you know, sending us that information. Uh, very much appreciate the behalf of the town of Hardwick. I would like to thank the Barry Fire Department for responding to a structure fire in our town on Friday, Feb. nine. No one was injured and the house was saved. Mutual aid is a great thing. We do have, as you know, uh, relationships with the town of Hardwick in the area of our ambulance services, so it is good to see cooperation between and among us. We save money and hopefully save lives and, and property. Okay, playgrounds, we're, we're done with. You know, senior center resignation, we do have a resignation letter from Eileen Clarkson, who has, um, given her resignation effective on March one, uh, as she's leaving her post as the director of the senior center. That leaves us, um, ready and able to post that position. Uh, we thank Eileen for her, um, work in the town of Barry and wish her well in her future endeavors.
I'll, uh, move to accept the resignation.
Uh, we have a motion made to accept the resignation of Eileen Clarkson. We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. And, um, we'll send her just a notice that we've accepted that resignation. Um, okay, moving along. Um, senior center director job description review, I think, um, you've provided us with that, Tammy?
Yep.
Do I have that? Yeah, somewhere here. Okay, I don't seem to have it in my stack. End-use occupancy, and, well, Mark is gonna share with me. I've seen it anyway, um, I've done something, so. And this, this obviously is what we use as the basis of our search. I believe you did. I do, I'm, I do, I just, I just say, hey, I just.
I don't believe you.
I, 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 I am very familiar.
I move to reject?
No. So, basically, what we'll be doing is this will be the substance of our, um, our posting for the position that we would like to do immediately in order to fill this very important position. I mean, it's pretty perfunctory stuff. It just indicates, you know, duties and responsibilities. But some of you may have questions about it.
Aye, ma'am.
No. I, oh, I found your copy.
Ah, I knew it wouldn't make, thanks.
Okay, I'll, I'll take that.
No, I, I, I saw it anyway, and it's, and, and as they were working on.
It's like, wow, this is a lot of pages. I thought it was only a few.
Yeah.
Is there a common database where people who look to.
Yeah, yes, yes.
To become leaders and, so.
Yeah, I mean, Mass Municipal has a, has a, has a place where we can, you know, post and advertise jobs. That's a place where a lot of people who have, work in the public sector look, um, so we do reach out there. I don't know, Tammy, if you're gonna do indeed or not, or.
Uh, we're gonna do, try the website and, and then make, 'cause everything costs money, so we'll see.
Yeah, well, MMA usually is a good place to garner.
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we look for a motion to accept the, um, prove the position description for the council on aging director or director of the council.
I move to approve and post the, uh, position description for director, for the council, uh, for the senior center director, is that right?
We have.
The director of the council on aging.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the, uh, position description for the director of the council on aging.
Uh, before we vote, I just wanna make sure, that is the, the proper position title, director COA? Or would that be director of the senior center?
That is, that's what COA is, director of senior center, yeah.
Council on Aging, okay.
Council on Aging, yeah.
We have made, motion made and seconded. Um, any further clarification, comment? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Looks like the unanimous vote. Thank you for that, Tammy, getting that done, and that'll be out tomorrow, right?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we wanna move as fast as we can on this, on, you know, we've had, uh, you know, a little bump in the road here.
Yeah.
Okay, so good to be back. Okay, ARPA funding review, we have the materials that we need to spend some time with and continue to search some minutes just to make sure that we have all of our ducks in a row and done properly.
Yeah, I think we kinda covered that.
And I think we have some annual town meeting things to, um, work on here. Annual, it looks like we need to amend the time we originally voted. Did we originally vote seven P.M.?
No, we originally voted six.
Okay, but it's six.
Where's the typo? It should be six-thirty.
Six-thirty, okay. So we have an annual town meeting amendment from the six P.M. that we originally voted to six-thirty P.M., and the location to be Ruggles Lane School. We need a motion?
And what's the date of that?
Um.
That is June.
June, eleventh or twelfth.
I thought it was eleven, June eleventh.
June eleventh, June eleventh, too. Was it the last meeting? They voted for that date.
Tuesday, June eleventh.
Yeah. So Tuesday, June eleventh is the, uh, date. The amended time is six-thirty P.M., and the location is Ruggles Lane School. We have a motion?
I, I move to amend the time for the annual town meeting to be on Tuesday, June eleventh at six-thirty P.M., uh, at Ruggles Lane School.
We have a motion made?
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, boards and committees, we have a number of, of, of shifting around here. Um, we have individuals interested in the position of, um, the council on aging group, the appointment of Bruce Velozco.
Velozzo.
Velozzo?
Yeah.
I apologize for, it's.
Uh, I think it might be, I think we may need to take up the resignation before, or actually, how many seats are currently available?
Well, the resignation will be back to one seat opening.
Okay, so we can do the appointments first, then, okay.
Okay, we have Mr. Bruce Velozzo. Those in favor? All right, we should, we need, we need a motion.
Do you do a little separate?
Yeah, I'll do a separate.
Move to appoint Bruce Velozzo to the council on aging?
Second?
Second.
The motion made and seconded to appoint Bruce.
I assume Sandy, he meets all the requirements?
My second, I'm sorry.
Or, uh, actually, Tammy, uh, wouldn't, wouldn't he apply, he meets the requirements?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
His, uh, application is in here.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, great.
Oh, yeah.
Go on, let me.
Okay, and then we have an appointment, Dennis Fleming, to, uh, join the council on aging. Um, Mr. Fleming has.
Did we vote on?
Do we, do we?
We didn't, we need to vote on Bruce still.
I'm sorry. Those in favor of Mr. Velozzo?
Aye.
Aye. We have, uh, again, an appointment for Dennis Fleming to seek an appointment to the council on aging. He's done the appropriate paperwork and is present for questions if we have any for him. We need a motion?
I move to appoint Dennis Fleming to the council on aging.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to appoint Dennis Fleming to the council on aging. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Looks like a unanimous vote.
Thank you for stepping up.
Then we have a council on aging resignation, Margaret Leahy Mark Orelli?
Mark, Mark Orell.
Mark Orell. Uh, Margaret Leahy Mark Orelli, she has been on very briefly, I believe, since the spring.
September, yeah.
Oh, okay, that's, okay. And we need a motion, accept the resignation.
I move to accept the resignation of Margaret Leahy Mark Orell.
We have.
From the council on aging.
Motion made and seconded, and, uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Okay, so I think we're a wrap on that.
So we still have one open spot on the council on aging, so we'll keep that posting up.
It's still up.
Yeah, all right. If you know anybody, or.
Well, trust me, it's like a revolving door. I mean, we've done so many.
Hopefully not anymore. Dennis, you gonna get everybody in shape?
I'm spending time.
How is it an alternate door?
Yeah.
Go, Dennis.
Well, I mean, I mean, there's, 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 there's a lot to do as, you know, once we move through, you know, the process of hiring a new person for the senior center directorship, I mean, there's, you know, there's gonna be some changes, and I would suspect just because people are different and approach things differently. Where I know Mark has already been involved a little bit with some of the, um, plant facilities matters that we need to address.
Hmm.
And so we continue to work on that. Um, so, old business, seeing none, I would move to seek a motion to adjourn.
I will move to adjourn.
We have a motion made, we have a motion made and seconded to adjourn. Those in favor?
Aye.
It looks like we're done.